Welcome to our November meeting of the Forest Hills Board of Education. To just give everybody a fair heads up, you may have a big camera in the back of your room. We've been sampling with our communications director since early August, and we're so anxiously awaiting the arrival of our new communications director today, Kyle Gilbert, who is incredibly sick at home, and we pretty much had to send out forces to keep him there, so we can get him here sooner rather than later. But as if we weren't confident enough in the interactions we've had with the nudge power, he reached out to us over the weekend and said, "I have plans that I'm disappointed I can't put into practice." So our Fine Arts Center guru, Jerry, is here to work with Kyle and get us recorded and start the process of seeing how to best share our business and our activities with the community. So just wanted to make sure. Yep, so we all wish Kyle our best. We look forward to seeing him at the next meeting. And he said, "Hopefully you will see something from him soon." So thank you. At this point, we have the pleasure of beginning our meeting with Girl Scout Troops 4774 and 8118. Joining us in the front, so please take a seat.
Girl Scouts attention, flagrant advance. Flagrant, honor your, no, flagrant, trust your. Flagrant, honor your flag. Please stand to meet you.
To the pride of the United States of America, and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much for being here. Hi, I'm Claire. Hi, Claire. Thank you so much for being here.
My name is Claire.
Thank you, Claire.
My name is.
Thank you so much for being here. Super Tenet Bean, please pick up our welcome this evening.
It would be my pleasure to do so. It's my honor to introduce the principal here at Central Woodlands 5th and 6th Schools. Is any person?
Happy birthday, Mr. Bean. To our Forest Hill Public School Board of Education, as well as Super Tenet Bean, good evening to all. It's my pleasure to welcome you to Central Woodlands. November is a month during which we pause to reflect upon so many lessons. I want you to know how grateful our staff and I are for students, our work of education. We thank you for your unending service to our children and our community. Thank you for supporting the educators in our learning organization in their complex, but incredibly rewarding work. We could not accomplish everything we're able to do for kids without your support. Welcome to Central Woodlands and happy Thanksgiving. There are some gifts in front of you. Tonight you will hear from our student writers, and so you have the gift of student writing, as well as the gift of a blank notebook and journal. It all starts with the blank page. Tonight you will hear from our incredible student writers and our phenomenal teachers of writing. Our students are daily investing in their futures by growing as writers. Writing is making. Central Woodlands Rangers are putting such effort into expanding upon small moments with the written word and using their experiences to fill a page with extraordinary details told from the perspective of youth. It's my pleasure to introduce you to Mrs. Trish Stiles, one of our sixth grade teachers and a lead learner at Central Woodlands. Mrs. Stiles will introduce our instructional highlight this evening.
Hi, I'm Trish Stiles, and I teach here at Central Woodlands. I'm a sixth grade teacher of Language Arts and Social Studies. I'm supposed to talk to you tonight about what we do for narrative writing here at Central Woodlands, but I kind of would rather talk to you about our writers. As a Language Arts teacher, I have often struggled with how to inspire my students to generate this like life of love for writing. And lastly, or the last 20 months have also brought about just a lot of challenges for our students, both academically and socially. Heading into this year, the teachers were a little bit worried about potential academic gaps that we would need to address. However, we do know that research shows that students need extensive opportunities to write on topics that they care deeply about. And for fifth and sixth graders, we felt the easiest topic for them to begin with was themselves, because they didn't like to talk about themselves. So we wrote every day, building our stamina, and it was hard. They initially were like, "What, we have to write for four minutes straight without looking at our pencils?" And they were just so worried that they were going to write poorly, and they were worried about what other people were going to begin to think about them. They were worried to share, and honestly, what they started with just really wasn't that meaningful and it wasn't something that they were super proud of. But all it takes is one student, one vulnerable share, one powerful moment, and students really start to begin to feel safe and they're heard, and feel heard. I found that the more that we wrote for our readers who met, the more students wanted to share. And honestly, it was because they really wanted to be known by their peers and by their teachers. Elements of the writing process truly came to life as my students immersed themselves in mentor texts. They researched and rehearsed their stories with each other, and they celebrated their successes together. At Central Woodlands, we start the year with narrative writing, because it's some of the most important work that we do, which is getting to know our students. And we build an environment of trust, acceptance, and accountability through this narrative writing. I'm so incredibly proud of the growth that my students have made, both academically and socially, in just a short period of time since the start of this whole year. And while it's really important for us as teachers to convey how proud we are of our writers, we also strive for our students to be intrinsically motivated and to recognize their own strengths and areas of talent. One of my students wrote in his narrative and aftered this perfectly. He said, "Yes!" I screamed in a raspy voice as if I was in a tunnel. "I had done it." I thought to myself, "I looked at my dad," and his eyes crunched with pride as he looked back at me. "All the hard work had finally paid off," I thought to myself, and I felt that my dad had thought that too. So, since students say it better than we do, don't take my word for it. Please take a few moments to watch some of our amazing CW student writers and just how valuable this narrative writing work can be.
It's important for kids to become strong writers, because they can use it to persuade people, like if you say you're selling something. Or you can use it to make people happy, like our normal fiction books. And it can also show of important lessons in life.
Something I'm learning this year is how to appreciate all this with writing. Pretty much all, every year I've hated personal narratives. I would like try to skip it, and it would be terrible. This year I already was like, "It's gonna be terrible again." But, and then I was put in quarantine, and as I was in quarantine, I kind of realized, "Well, you should try and step out of your comfort zone and try to try new things." As I started writing, the more I liked it, and I kept writing and writing and writing. And I think I wrote like 10 stories in just one day. And I learned that if you don't have to, if you like or initially don't like something, you don't have to stick with that. You can go on a different path.
This year it's description makes writing like more interesting.
When I started as a writer in sixth grade, I was very flavorless in my story. It was mostly like I tripped down the stairs. I fell. My mom came down the stairs. But that wasn't as amazing as what I'm doing now. Now, I'm adding more detail and lots of life and flavor into the stories.
Um, I'm growing as a writer. I've gotten better at applying my work. And I'm getting used to wider variety of transition words and use them more.
I think feedback has taught me better writing, because I know what people like. I could improve on it and taught me to make my writing better, because I know that I can probably use different techniques or have different things that might be good.
Hi, my name is Seth Johnson, and I'm a fifth grade teacher at Central Woodlands. I teach Language Arts, and I've been teaching writing for, this is my 16th year already. And it's just such a great thing to teach. I love teaching writing, and I think I really love teaching writing, because it really gives a glimpse into students' lives that otherwise sometimes might go unnoticed. I think that's one of the things I love about it, is when I read kids' writing, they say things in their stories, and it's the way they talk that, again, sometimes doesn't come out in a normal way. So it gives me a nice connection to kids that I can get to know them better through their writing. So that's just one thing I love each year about getting to know kids through the writing, especially the personal narrative writing that we do in the fall.
Hi, my name is Noel Gillis. I am a fifth grade teacher of Language Arts. And Language Arts, it has become one of my very favorite things to teach. And what I love about it, and what I've learned over the years as a teacher, and worked so hard to perfect what I'm doing, is the joy that I see in my students when they find their voice in their writing. And it's such a hard thing to do, but one of my favorite tricks that kids love the most is using mentor texts and finding those authors that really have that wonderful voice that kids can really emulate, and that's my favorite.
On February 6th, 2021, we drove to Renee's house full of anticipation. "It's finally happening," I thought to myself. "We're actually getting a puppy." When we arrived, I was more excited than a daughter on peanut butter. We rang Renee's doorbell and greeted her welcome in place. "Hi," she said with a warm smile. "Come on in." Her house was a small, cozy one, but large playpen and water park. When I saw that, I couldn't contain my excitement. I felt like a volcano about to blow its top off and erupt with happiness. Oh my gosh, these are so cute.
When I snapped out of it, I melted to arms as I hugged her and realized she smelled everything I remember. She used to smell like our room at our house, but now she smells like, I don't know, maybe London. It was a sweeter scent than I expected. I began to cry, and strangely, my stomach feels better. My brain stops spinning and my heart is blissful as our five-minute-long hug comes to an end. I can't believe she's actually sitting right next to me in our van. She buckles onto the middle seat to be closer to me. I can feel her warmth as she continues to hold my hand tightly in her own. Just having her there makes everything about me calm down.
I heard birds chirping through my window, a slight burst through my window. I blinked a few times. I yawned, remembering it was Sunday. But Sunday what? I thought about lying in bed. Sunday, hmm, Sunday, Sunday, my birthday. I remember throwing off my sheets and wearing a dress. There I saw my mom and dad making breakfast. "Happy birthday," they both cheered. "Thanks," I said excitedly. I sniffed the air. "Coffee cake?" "Yep," said my mom, working on the scrambled eggs. "Can you please go wake up your brother, please?" "Sure thing," I said, already halfway up the stairs. "Sam, it's breakfast." "Okay," he replied tiredly. "Oh, and happy birthday."
I gasped at the tree branch that my aunt pointed to in the shade of the hot summer sun. The branches were all sprawled out, covering the canopy, but there was one peculiar one. It didn't look like the rest. It looked like there was a snowstorm that had just hit that branch. It kind of reminded me of the time I was looking for milkweed seed pods, and milkweed bugs were covering the plant from root to the top of its base. "What the heck is that?" I yelled as I stared up amazed at the white fluffy tree branch that hogged low like I had just seen a UFO. "I can't remember a bug. Is this one of these fluffy?" I thought. Aunt Becky must know what it is. She's taken the classes for years. I gently picked up a short pin stick and lightly touched the branch, but the fluff started shaking around wildly. I definitely don't remember a bug doing that. We were both laughing at the silly sight. It already made a good highlight for the day. My mind was racing though, trying to figure out what it could be. Her face looked like she was doing the same, but she glanced upstairs.
After we calmed our breaths, we went back to the drop. The drop is a small waterfall that you have to crab walk down. At the bottom, we came to another mini tunnel, and Addie stuck her head in. "Oh, not again, Addie. This didn't go so well last time," I warned her. But she kept on going and said, "I'll be fine." All of a sudden, I saw eyes. "I see eyes!" I screamed, running for the exit with Reagan and Olive. Addie came back a minute later, and there might as well have been steam coming out of her ears. "There were no eyes," she yelled. "The so-called eyes were the tag on my boot." There's a small moment of silence between us, then we cracked up laughing. We talked about our spooky adventures the whole way home. Our friendship had grown stronger thanks to some echoing scream in Addie's boots. I think it's funny how friendship can grow stronger just because of one scary accident.
I'm Crystal Hambrich. I teach sixth grade at Central Woodlands. And when I think about my writers this year, and something that has surprised me, I think about that effort that they put into their revisions of their narrative stories this year. It's been really incredible to see that, their intention with adding in internal thinking and dialogue and show language. And really impressive, an example is a student who each day we did intentional revisions would highlight his new revision, and by the end product, the end piece, his published piece, he had only one original line left that wasn't highlighted. So thinking about students really putting in the effort and wanting to do well and be successful with their writing has been great this year.
One of the things that surprised me most during this past unit for narrative writing was how comfortable by the end students were with sharing their pieces. When I first started with them, they were terrified to share anything about their writing. They were afraid of being poor writers and having other people see that. But as we continued to write each day and share with each other, they became more vulnerable. And by the end, they were winding up to share. And so we did an entire celebration for the end of our narrative unit, and they were just so excited for each other. And it was so cool to see kids from all different backgrounds, boys and girls, be excited to celebrate each other's writing.
Is Trisha still here?
No.
You know, I think many of this can relate to the fact that writing can be a challenge for our kids. And one young man in my family that became a blow a few times. So to see how excited and how much your kids embrace that opportunity to communicate with the written word is exciting. We're so grateful to you for sharing.
Thank you.
Does anybody have questions or comments or thoughts from Mrs. Stiles?
Well, what was interesting was I did actually jot a couple of questions down, but when Trisha came on later on in the video, she actually addressed some of those things. Because, I mean, this is something here and here to my heart, because I myself am an ELA teacher at Calagonia High School. And listening to the students share what they wrote, I was like, "Oh, nice work with dialogue." "Oh, yes, I love that. I see eyes," just the way it was written. And I was, you know, excited to see how excited they were. And I was thinking about, you know, yes, teaching writing is probably the most challenging part of, you know, English Language Arts. I mean, especially if you get a good mentor text. I mean, that good writing can develop good writing from, you know, other students. And I could just see the joy in those kids when they wanted to share what they had written. And what I wanted to mention was, you know, how you get them comfortable with feedback. Because that right there is the key to that intrinsic motivation, is realizing that it's an uncomfortable process to come to terms with the fact that you're not perfect on that first shot, which is what students, and I've noticed over the last several years too, an extreme fear of being perfect and not wanting to make a mistake. And so what you're doing in that classroom is precisely what we want to see happen in ELA classrooms, that comfort with discomfort. And so I was, you know, I was also gonna ask, I mean, you mentioned you celebrate successes, and I know that's the final piece of the puzzle right there. And you could just see the way that they were so proud to share, that in itself is a success. So you know, any student who was in that video is so proud to have shared on that video for all of us to hear what they wrote. I mean, that is the magic. I just kind of love that. So thank you so much for sharing. I can see true success in what you're doing in that classroom.
You taught a couple of my children in the past, so thank you. And one of them is going to be a journalist, so thank you for that.
Which one?
He loves writing, so thank you.
Which one?
Reeve.
Reeve?
Yes.
I can see that. I can see that. Tell him I say hi.
Okay, thank you. At this point in the meeting, we have some special presentation that was prompted out of some really nice feedback and a lot of interest expressed in our last meeting about our 21st century learning task force presentation. So Super Tenet Bean, why don't you share a little more detail on how that came about?
Yes, thank you, President Fox. So we've been talking about, really, how we are approaching education in our high schools especially for many years now. And our presentation last month on our 21st century task force really is another outgrowth of a lot of our work related to reimagining some aspects of high school. And if we think about high school, if we go back a little bit more than 25 years ago, when Proposal A was adopted, we had each year about 900 hours of instruction that a student would receive in a typical school year. And then we've been increasing that. Really, by the time we got around to the early years of the 21st century, we were up to 1,100 hours of instruction. So adding 200 hours every year, almost the equivalent of over four years, an entire grade level. If you think about those 800 additional instructional hours that students had at that time. But that wasn't the only thing that was going on in our state and in our country. We also had this thing called Standards-Based Reform. The Standards-Based Reform was really about bringing about a common set of criteria standards, not only across our state, but several states got together. In fact, 48 or 49 or 50 states got together in a standards-writing process in the early 2000s, inspired a little bit by No Child Left Behind, but also the National Governors Association was really big in employing these groups together. And they worked with an outside entity called Achieve Incorporated, and they came up with a salut of standards. In fact, so many standards that as we've done an analysis of them, and as independent people looking at all the things that are in this set of standards and all of the common content areas that we think of. It's estimated it would take students to about age 24 to master all of these standards. So we have a lot. If you talk to teachers, what teachers will say is, "My gosh, I'm having to march through these standards at such a rapid pace." So we've added 800 hours, but we've filled that with all sorts of content in these standards. So as we talk to students, students feel that as well. And we've done this many, many times over the years. We brought focus groups of students together to say, "Describe what it is that you're feeling in high school." And I'll just take a little bit of a digression here. One of the things that I notice in kids, like if you watch kindergartners go into school, they literally sort of bounce. They sort of hop. And they're happy, and they're noticing the snowflake and the change of the leaves and the like. And then the other thing that I've noticed is as the years go by and as these kindergartners grow, the bounce gets less and less and less. And then as you get to high school, oftentimes, there's no bounce at all. There's more of, "Here we are again." And we know that learning can be joyful. We just saw great examples of it here from 11 and 12-year-olds in their work. And we know that as human beings, we seek to make meaning of our world and seek to come together and share that in a collaborative way. But as we look at the policy decisions of our schools, instead, it feels like this joyless march through all of these standards. And there's so many of them that we don't have the time to connect the standards to all of the relevant things that are going on in our world and how we might be able to apply these things. And so we've been looking at this issue of these siloed content standards, where we just talked about math in math class. It's so many, and this aim for quantity of standards in thinking that is rigor versus the quality and the depth of learning. And then we didn't stop there. In the state of Michigan, we added a new set of statutes in state law called the Michigan Merit Curriculum. And this was built of a desire that we wanted more and more students to go on to four-year universities and go on to college and increase the college-going rate in our state. And so what happened at that point in time is instead of the state having in law a decision that they were going to require civics or US government and physical education, those were the two high school courses that were required as credits in law. And then local Boards of Education came up with the remainder of what was required for students to graduate from high school. And that happened in hundreds of districts across the state. That was changed. Instead of two courses required, we've seen a requirement of nearly 20 different course credits all the way through enshrined in state law. Well, quickly, what happened? And I'll just give it with a background, because I asked, "What was the reason for this particular policy change?" And it was told many times, "Well, there were people in our state government that looked at, who were the students that were going on to college? The goal was getting more students to go to college. Who were those students?" And they looked, and they said, "Oh, these students took very similar courses." They would take several, four years of English Language Arts, four years of math. And they looked at the actual courses they would take, and they said, "Aha! If we mandate that all students take all these courses, students will go to college." So there was a classic situation here where we were confusing correlation with causation in this particular circumstance. And so the policy was adopted, it was enacted in law, and we had the Michigan Merit Curriculum come in. Since the Michigan Merit Curriculum has been adopted, it has been amended nine times, because people have realized the error of the ways in the policy. The first set of amendments came through from the manufacturing industry, where they said, "What happened to our welders? What happened to our advanced manufacturing candidates? We don't have any of those students going to intern in those programs, in our career and technical education programs." And so they said, "Okay, we'll make that tweet." Well, to make a long story short, there have been several tweets that have been happening over time. But we also asked students, and I've asked students directly, and even in our county here, Kent County at the time, we're similar to this number, 28 high schools in Kent County. Randomly, we chose as a group of school districts, and this was about 12, 13 years ago now, one student, so one student from each high school, so we had 28 students. And we had some combined focus groups, we're all 28 were together. And then we also had some times where it was a one-on-one Q and A with each of the 28 students. And that's what I want to talk about, is that one-on-one Q and A, interviewing 28 students individually, where they couldn't hear their other peers' responses. We, one of the questions we asked was, "Describe a high school in one word." Describe a high school in one word. 19 of the 28 students had the precise same answer, one-word answer. And that was boring. Boring. So we think of those 4,400 hours, and we think of the potential engagement that we could have there with students. And then we think of the disengagement of students. And as we've gone even further, and as I've talked to students, they've said, "Well, we want to add a second word to it if we could." And this is a hyphenated, anxiety-provoking. So boring and anxiety-provoking at the same time, that's a really strange juxtaposition of emotions that students have. And I said, "Say more about it." And they said, "Well, because we feel such pressure to gather all of these courses and all of these credit hours, and in the right courses, and with the right types of grades." because we know that it's the right courses, the right credit hours, and the right grades that unlock the next step in our lives, in our future." And that's a belief that many students hold. And they also believe that if they don't do that in the right way, that their self-worth plummets. And so that's where the anxiety really comes in. And I believe that we confuse achievement with learning. Oftentimes, they are similar items, but too often, they're disconnected. We've set up a system where students are incentivized to achieve, but the learning perhaps is only temporary in that actual time. And we know that learning is deep and sticky, when we saw what we saw in the video here, when we actually have kids trying something and then building on previous efforts. So they're iterating each time, and they're learning more and more and more as they go with feedback and reflection and looking at things like an expert in that field. And not just an expert who may be a peer, but an actual adult. We do this in the fine arts all the time. We give students the tools that adults use in the fine arts. We give them a violin. And we say, "Here, play the violin." And they start progressing. Maybe it takes 10,000 hours, I'm not sure, become virtuoso, or maybe it's 40,000 hours, but we get them started on that playing time. And we have them listen to adults, we have them listen to experts, and we have them go through feedback, and they're excited, they're engaged as they go through that process. And what we're trying to do is to bring about a high school experience that looks and feels more like students understanding and having a mirror into what is it that adults do in the adult world, and having practice with that actual world. And less time sitting and listening to adults talk about things that happen in the adult world. So it's more time doing, more time practicing, more time receiving that feedback and going forward. And it's also interdisciplinary. We're breaking down the boundaries of those different courses and saying that in life, rarely do we discover a math problem all on its own as an adult, just sitting there. Instead, it's connected with usually a context that involves multiple disciplines or multiple subjects. So, what we're looking to do is to bring more of the types of things that adults are working on. Adults are working on all sorts of sticky problems and sticky projects that they're trying to figure out, how do we solve these problems and projects? And actually, bring students into this work as well on real-life things, engagement goes through the roof. We are trying to make regular connections with adult workers, adult employers, people who are working in the workforce all the time to find out what is it they need, what is it they're working on. Just to give you one quick example, this happened about a year ago. We had students who were helping a local nonprofit try to reduce energy costs. They're trying to figure out, how do we put more of our dollars into the mission of our nonprofit and less money into the administration of the nonprofit? And part of that was energy costs. So our students went through and did an energy audit. They even did this virtually, amazingly, as they adapted to things with the pandemic, and ended up with a whole portfolio that they presented. And I know some of our workers saw products of that work as well. So there's just one example, it's a small example, but students used and had to master standards in math, standards in English Language Arts around communications writing, standards in science as they were converting all sorts of things on the electrical side, and in other standards as well. So, I kind of compare this to, I remember back in the day where you had to buy the whole album to listen to the song, right? Yeah, maybe at 45s, but I also kind of grew up in that world where they started bombarding my mailbox with the Columbia House, that's what it was. It was Columbia House, that's right. Columbia House, where you could get, you know, three CDs for, you know, a dollar, and then you'd get one everyone. And then, that whole world changed when Apple came out with iTunes. I could get just that one song that I was really looking for. So, the iTunesification, let's make up a word here today, the iTunesification of all of these hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of curriculum standards. If we could group those together, and so now when I and my colleagues are working on that project for the local nonprofit, which is a real problem that they have to reduce their energy footprint costs, I can look at those standards and pull out a few, and my teacher can look at that and say, "Aha! You've mastered these here, and you still have these other ones to go." It reminds me of when I was, in the 1970s, I was in Cub Scouts, and my Cub Scout den mom had, she passed out this book, it's kind of like this size, it's called The Book of Weeblo. And in The Book of Weeblo, you could go through several different sections and chapters, and when you thought you were ready, if I thought I could start a fire with two sticks out in the woods, I would read that, I would understand, and I would go practice, and then when I was ready to demonstrate my proficiency with the den mother, I would go do that, and boom, I'd get a badge, and we could go. Now, what was cool about that is some of my fellow Cub Scouts, we could be working on the same badge, or we could be working on different ones. So it moved along with our interest on that as well. Imagine a high school experience where we made clear what all the standards are, not only to the parents, but to all the students as well, and we've grouped like standards together, and we've also maybe taken some time to rethink some of those games. I always have, I'm going to pick on one content area, and I always do it. I love math, but, you know, we require every student to take Algebra II. And Algebra II is not the same Algebra II as adults took maybe 30, 40 years ago, 20 years ago even. So we have a three-week unit in that Algebra II on imaginary numbers. Imaginary numbers. Now, as an adult, I have yet to run into an imaginary number, right? I have yet to run into a problem that requires me to use that content of imaginary numbers. Now, math teachers will push back, and they have, and I love this. They'll say, "But it's about deeper thinking, it's about flexing our thinking models." "Hey, okay, we need to do that." Athletes will always have a time of war mode, right? So if that's what we're doing, let's be clear about that, though. Let's not hide that to students and parents. Let's be clear that that's what we're doing in this part of it and how it's going to connect you. You're not going to run into a lot of these things out in the adult world. So if you kind of put it into context, that stress and strain that our students feel, that everything feels of the weight of the world importance as they're thinking about what their next step is beyond high school. And I also just want to say that beyond high school, what I see for students is continued learning. That's what I see. Where that takes place is really up to individual students and their families, and that can happen at all different points in time. Some of the best people who really had college, that I encountered when I was in college, were people who didn't go to college right away, who lived more of life. But everyone's got their own pathway, and it's not the place of the school district to dictate what that is. It's simply to provide opportunities for students to be able to choose their own successful path. So, we want more engagement from our students. We want to bring that bounce back that we know lies within all of our students. I only just suggest to you, if you watch students during a high school musical production, you'll see that bounce. You'll see that backstage, you'll see that before the performance, you'll see that after the performance, you will see that engagement as they're all coming together, working on a variety of 21st century skills, collaboration, problem-solving, communication, deep learning that's taking place, responsibility. And when we provide them space and time to practice those things and to do what our writers do here, iterate each time, great things can happen. And so, I'm so proud of the work our teachers are doing to wrestle with these issues. They did not come up with this system of 4,400 hours and enough standards to take up what really is about 10 years of high school, shoving them all in that timeframe. But instead, they're trying to innovate and iterate, and we see all three of our high schools working through these challenges, and at different stages, and also with different approaches trying to address this. So, I know as a board, we've talked about this before, but just, yeah, a little. Just to open it up, I know we had a great conversation in a finance committee meeting, but just to the members of this board, to thoughts and feedback and, you know, other, even challenging some of our challenges as well. And I'd also say, this is something as we talk about as a board here, I'd love to, as we get into January and February, take this conversation to our students, to our parents, and meet in an even larger venue, and have our teachers and others interact, and even our employers and our admissions counselors at our universities, because what they have to say about these things may surprise some people as well. So thoughts, reactions?
I always take issue with dumb being irrelevance in the school, I get one.
Yes, you do.
But I will say, it's not a three-day topic. And I will tell you, some of us could sit in on their next step by a presentation that was an energy audit, which is what I used to do in my profession. And those kids did exactly what I did as a 24-year-old, and I think it was because they were passionate, they understood the relevance, and educators know that is the challenge that's been around a long, long time that came around. And what was so cool about that is not only did they nail their actual energy audit and create recommendations that the industry embraced and acted on, the consumer's energy, his chin, the representative's chin was down here. When you really, I think, are engaged and connected to what you're learning, these kids listened to the customer, and they heard over and over how passionate they were about the environment. And so these kids took it upon themselves to continually record their footprint, what their actions would take, to see if that was an additional motivation to add to their recommendations they gave. It was fascinating. So this work is exciting, and it's really exciting to actually see it play out. Thinking something is good is one thing, seeing it be good is another, and we've seen it over and over and over, and it's fun to see that continue. So.
I think too, I watched my daughter, she's a fifth- to sixth grader, while she was eating in 10-degree weather on the Goodwill Deck. And so, it definitely is something that you try and capture in a lot of different venues and contexts and trade stages. If it's, I think it's that interdisciplinarity is so important. My college kids, it's a standard in college that when you write lesson plans and unit plans in your education major, they have to have some interdisciplinary. But so many of those college kids have not lived interdisciplinary. And so that's a big challenge that we have to work through on a regular basis. Now, of course, I have a handful of teachers that have been fantastic on this, but it is a lot of extra work. But when it happens, it is so magical and inspiring and really does contribute to a lifelong learner, someone who loves that learning. So I know that the more it happens at the 12th level, the more naturally it will happen in the middle teacher education program, that it's just kind of then, this ongoing cycle, good for students. So, I do think the more that we can make that interdisciplinary education the standard and not the exception, I know that's what it is.
I think to your point, we have to make it cultural within our district. It's supposed to be, we've been talking a lot about cultivating possibilities in the district. And then, just three thoughts here. We have to put them on the rails of learning, right? You have to learn as students and 21st century learners, but at the same point, there's some worklogs out there. You have technology that's going to be a good thing and a bad thing. You have communities of workers, and what does that really look like in the future of that? You have a lot of things you're going to be playing with, but if you can look at cultivating possibilities, and that is what we do within the district, as you said, maybe. I think teachers, staff, meeting of the board, we will always be looking then at what are we doing X in that same regard. So that's what we need to do, as you said, bring that community, and bring everyone in to have these deeper conversations, that's really what I'm looking to do.
Nicole, I love what you raised that, because this makes me think again about cultivating learners to achieve their individual potential. And I had taught for 11 years, and then I encountered Odyssey of the Mind for the first time in my life. And when I saw students working through that, I said, "This is what education should be. Why have we been doing it this way for 100 years? This is insane." And so, I talked it all. Last seven years, it's been nothing but 21st century project-based, specific learning, inquiry learning. And I've just been trying to tell everyone that I work with who's tried to view, you know, things that I'm doing or other teachers are doing with 21st century learning. This is the key. This is what cultivates curiosity. And that curiosity is what each individual student can pursue to really achieve their individual potentials. And I think, you know, what kills me is expectations. The expectations people have of, "This is what education has been, this is what I experienced, this is what it should continue to be." But for our Generation Z students, the way that they process information, when you can have everything in an instant with that little thing in your pocket, meaning specifically the home, nothing else, that this, that you don't have to memorize all of these things and spit it out, that is not what education should be anymore. And I lived watching that, the difference, the stars in the eyes, the bouncing step, which is actually why I ran for school board in the first place, is I want to see 21st century learning as a culture, as this is the direction where we can bring that bounce to the step, those stars in the eyes, individual potential.
I think a lot of parents, it's parents' community that forget that, right? I mean, what I said, "Forget," is that even myself, I have a student who's a 308, got 1,300-plus on his SAT, and he wanted to buy an old car and fix it up. I'm like, "What are you going to do with it?" And he fixed it up, bought it, fixed it up, sold it for four times its worth, and now he wants to go to KCTC, take a few classes there, still continue obviously with this education that I've been forced to use during. And it took me a lot of thinking around this, like, is this the right direction for him? And I think it is. I mean, when you come back to, what are those buckets? This is his passion, he loves it, he can find another car right now. So, again, it's parents' community, I mean, we shift our thinking and think this is an okay thing to do.
Yeah, to echo on that, because, and what you said, with Odyssey of the Mind, you said, you know, because I've been involved with that as well for years, and seeing the kids get involved in tackling so many different things from so many different perspectives. And like Diane mentioned with, you know, kids that are in theater, they are all about theater, they love to do that, and kids that are on the robotics team, they love to do that. The thing that they do in their extra regular time can really inform what it is that they could potentially shift in that kind of thing to the classroom, because that's where they want, that's where they want to spend their time, that's where they want to spend their energy. And yeah, it can be a real trek for people our age to get our minds around the idea that, well, our kid that we're anticipating is going to college, why do you want to work on a car? Well, you can learn so much from working on a car, and you start looking at the way colleges are now in teaching things, and the more and more you look at them, they're not just come and sit in the classroom and learn, it's always a lot. It's moving also in the college world in a much more collaborative direction, so it's good, no matter what campus it's in.
Well, I think about opening business accounts, you had to market it, you had to go buy the parts, you know, open a spreadsheet for the patent laws, I mean, there's, I helped him with some of it, but I mean, he did it. I mean, I'm really super proud of all the skills, picture-taking, he would just kind of stack a weird picture, and then I'm like, "Mm, I like this, like, little thing goes here." So, I mean, he sold it really fast, so he did a lot, you can learn by doing those things. Hence, the 21st century learning when it was, when you're last, you know, month, so.
Yeah, and the goa boarding, it's not about a snowboarder, skateboarder, longboarder, those are, those are devices that then hook students into understanding so many of the concepts that you've talked about, that are about that's one, at a deeper level. And because they're actively involved with it, it gets anchored in the brain, and instead of just a discrete knowledge base to be regurgitated on a test and then forgotten about six weeks later, instead of becoming a knowledge base, it becomes a skill, and we're developing more and more of those skills. And that's what employers are looking for all the time. I do think we have to find ways to celebrate more forms of success. I do think we have to find ways to celebrate more forms of success. Too often, I think, our definition of success is too narrow. And broadening that, you know, if you look at some of the most successful entrepreneurs in our country, most of them did not finish college. So I'm not trying to dedicate formal learning as an educator, believe me, but what I'm trying to do is to say that learning can happen in so many different ways and different places, and we have to be able to give value to that. I think there is a crisis that we've got, and certainly is felt in our higher ed community, but we feel elements of it as well. You know, the higher ed, I think, is three Ds, debt, depression, doubt. We've got lots of kids who go on to higher ed thinking, my life will become clearer, or I've got this one career path in my head that I think is linked to my feeling of self-worth. And then if we haven't had experience with that, then we invest a bunch of money in that path, and then we, maybe we finish, or we don't, but if we finish, we get out and we realize, that isn't really the thing that gives me a bounce. Now I've got depression, I've got debt, and then the doubt comes in when, as human beings still, early on in their life, begin to doubt their own advocacy, their own self-worth, and that's a huge crisis. And we've got to be able to point to, I think of the story of one of our own teacher's sons, who's now 25, he graduated from Eastern High School, went on to be an electrician, went into an apprenticeship program, went to a national competition, and won the national competition, got a big prize award for that, has passed his journeyman's exam, and I don't know all the levels, but certainly is on his way to the master electrician, no debt, very happy, married, and not a financial carrier in the world, and looking to start his own business. Those type of stories, we need to tell, the same way that we tell the story of an athlete signing at a Division One school, or a 4.2 student going someplace different. They're all great things, we don't need to, the pie is big enough to elevate all of those folks.
You know, I'm talking about admission across the board, the diversity and relevance, what's in our world and all this is something we've talked about many times, is that we've discovered our passions and talents, and we've heard the stories about the onboarding kids that are now all over the action sports industry and have discovered the graphic, and Todd Berkel and me, we're all really into children and designer, and I think it might be good with kids, one is an environmental engineer, and one is an environmental policy analyst. So it's those things that we can latch onto and do their learning from that, seems to be so much more enjoyable to them, and really makes them a racing experience, I believe, so.
Well, I think, Dan, you hit the nail on the head when you talk about the fear of not being successful, and again, I want to bring back to the word expectations of what success is, and being courageous enough to adjust our expectations, even regardless of what we have seen for a lifetime, to recognize that it's not doing the favors.
Right, and it's not about, what I see when we open this up for our students, is they see the connection to the relevance, and when they know they're going to be publishing their work publicly, I see the level of mental effort, but the end product, students wanting to increase that on their own. Again, I've told the story many times, when we've had snow days, and invariably, you know, the sun comes out, and it's 11 o'clock, and the salt trucks have been by, and people say, hey, can we still meet for, you know, basketball practice or whatever? Invariably, the phone calls I get are, we've got a musical to do, and we want to meet for musical practice. Even if the salt trucks haven't come out, it's still a blizzard out, they still want to meet and go to the fine arts center, because they want themselves, students themselves are the ones who want to do that, because they want to elevate their own performance.
I think we have worked hard at the idea of grit, first years, and I remember that was a couple of years ago, at the opening day, we talked about grit, and I'd like, I think we are building this from, off of the elementary, teaching our kids that fail is okay, and I love that, that acronym fail is a first attempt to learn AI on. And I think that culture, I hope that culture is growing and continuing to scale. Because that, as you said, that's our goal of having kids leave us too deep in my mind, where they'll be given the tools to figure out how to do whatever it is, some of those chapters exist yet, and we are using that culture to help.
We've got models, we've got great models, and I see the line as a great model of that. Goodwill is a great model on that. Quite frankly, what we do in kindergarten and preschools are great models as well, I will make that point. What we're doing with Project Eagle is another great model. What we're doing with our hockey teams, with our STEM program, with Project Nets, with the capstone projects, so many things. And teachers have a hunger and desire to do this. Oftentimes, the system itself works against individuals in the system that say, we can make this better, if it's, and so it is trying to listen to all of our stakeholders and say, how do we do this? How do we do this in a way that engages all of our students, that sets them up for successful learning beyond high school, wherever that may be? And it's something that's doable for our teachers as well. Our teachers are under lots of strain, and so it's, and we've got teachers who've navigated this path, so it's listening to them more and saying, what is it that we need to do? I think it's also very important that we continue to provide choice. We've offered that, and we've not said to anyone, this is the only type of learning you can have, but we've allowed people to go with their feet. And what we're seeing is that more and more students are voting with their feet. What we're hearing from places, institutions of higher learning is they're saying, tell us more about that program, we want more of that, even though that hadn't been the narrative even just a decade ago. So we're seeing those changes as well. We've got to get that information to our parents, because I think our parents oftentimes are torn between, they want their child to have that bounce, but is this the right basket of courses and grade points that's going to unlock the door to the next level, and they think that acts in the direction of the child?
I think it's a little kind of maybe a lack of common, or kind of cultural, but you know, you've got, I can't, I've talked a little bit about that, or a lot about this. I think there'll be daily emails, I'm not sure, just keep a hold of that. But it's just really, it does go back to, you know, fluidity, you know, making sure that it's a district where we need choices to, first of all, put it out there, this is the direction that we want to go. We're being a little bit of culturally, you know, again, most players, stakeholders, stakeholders, people we have relationships with in our district community, but then, you know, are we going to be able to be fluid within the boundaries of our districts? You know, we do have three high schools, and it can become extremely, you know, eastern, western, western, eastern, there's a western. So our three high schools become a little bit separate, they are separated, so let's just look at it as a district, and from there, let's keep the best in the nation at this, right? But now, when we look out there, you know, you can look nationally, and there are some school districts who are working on this, I mean, we've seen it, right? We've seen it for the last 10 years, we've been doing research, you know, who's doing project-based learning, who's doing STEM, we're seeing this here and there, but no one's really doing it. And so, Dan, you have a great example of a program that, hey, we're going to be the best in the nation at this, and within three years, they were literally the best in the nation at that. So it's just something we have to take as a word and say, any community, if we're going to do this, let's do it, and really put ourselves in a position of great finding our district and, you know, to do it culturally.
And all the stakeholders, I think for sure, when you look at the people I'm with every day, which are a combination of adult learners and students in college, and it's not a multiple choice exam in the workplace, and our, whenever we engage with the business owners and business leaders in the community, they're, this is the workforce we're putting out, and they're eager to not just engage in the conversation, they're ready to come to the table to be involved in the work that's being done. So to support our teachers and let them know we've got their back, and this is, they're putting out great kids for the economy, so we're ready to go. Lady, thank you for getting us quick and speed, we missed any of the, the recent tasks that is.
And I do see a next step, trying to convene some sessions for community members, analysts of students, teachers, employers, admissions folks at higher education levels and the like, so stay tuned. Wonderful.
Would you wait to go right then into your update?
I would. Superintendent's update tonight, I want to focus just on a couple of things. One, where we are with our effort to bring in more people to help transport students each day. Our bus drivers do such incredibly important work, and we know we've got a national, maybe even global, transportation challenge right now in front of all of us, and transporting things is one. Transporting our students, that's something of critical importance. We have been making some progress since we have been seeking more drivers. We announced a driver fair back in late September, and that process of bringing along an applicant all the way to someone driving, I'm going to introduce one of those folks in just a moment here, but we have three of those people that expressed an interest in the fall and now are currently driving for us, so that's wonderful. We've got an additional person who's taking a test next week, and we learned that, our applicants tell us that there's lots of tests involved with becoming a new licensed, certified credential bus driver. And then we have two more people who are taking tests the first week of December, so three currently driving, one testing next week, and one testing the first week of December. If they pass those tests, they can begin driving. We have one additional person finalizing paperwork, but they're already fully credentialed from previous work, and so once the paperwork is done, they can be out helping us as well. Two people started the process, but said, thanks, but no thanks, this is not for me. And we have four more people who are scheduled for interviews this week, and at least one of those four is fully credentialed. We do have another ride and drive fair on December 4th, which is a Saturday from 9:00 to 1:00 at the transportation event. As I said to you, I wanted to introduce one of these folks who stepped up, and we heard from him last month, actually on 21st Century Learning, but this month. Paul, if you wouldn't mind just coming forward to the podium, Paul Doyle is a community member who has been. Paul, if you wouldn't mind just talking a little bit about your experience, from no experience with driving a school bus. Paul has been a successful entrepreneur, he's brought three different businesses to fruition at high scale and success. Paul knows more about the Federal Reserve payment system for clearing payments than I can, I've already screwed it up, and I've all been trying to describe it, but now Paul knows a little bit about the process of becoming a bus driver, but also the work of transporting our kids. So Paul, just talk a bit about your experience.
Thanks, Dan. Well, and candidly, the risk of becoming a driver is shared by you and my wife. My wife has been nudging me for a year and a half or two, as she saw these signs saying Forest Hills needs bus drivers, and I would look at her like she was crazy. One of the mistakes I make too often, but I learned, I learned. And then when we were meeting to talk about giving the 21st Century Learning Task Force meeting, you mentioned this crisis, and the fact that the district really needs drivers, that it is a national crisis, it's not something we're just experiencing locally, and that the district would take any and all help that it could get. And so I went that night after our meeting and thought about it the next day and said, are you serious? And you said yes. And I took you at that word, and I immediately applied to start the process, and that was on September 9. And so I've gone through the process, and I can tell you that it is very achievable. You don't have to have any extraordinary skills, you just have to have a willingness to learn and to try, and they're great trainers here, I will tell that to everybody. So I did try and finish, and I took the test on the second of November, yeah, what month are we at? And I'm just about to complete, I have two full weeks of driving. It's been fantastic, it really has. It was more than I expected, there's a lot, but it's all small stuff. Learning the bus, learning the parts of the bus, learning how to make sure that it's safe and that you're safe and the kids are safe, and then learning how to drive, and then learning the routes. And now the biggest challenge I'm facing, which is learning the names of the kids. And they are, they come on the bus with eyes this big, saying, you know, you can get right to the door. But the point is, we need drivers. I mean, what you were talking about, 21st century learning isn't going to do anybody any good if the kids can't get to their school. And we have a tremendous staff that are driving today. My understanding and appreciation of the role was very small before, and I respect it immensely. The thing is that there's so many people that I think be doing what I'm doing. While the district needs full-time drivers, I had brought forth an idea to Superintendent Beeman, into the staff, the leadership in transportation, which is, what if we were to build a reservist force? I'm a former active duty service member, and we have reserves for military that can fill in when you can't take care of needs with that personnel. Why don't we do that for bus drivers? Yes, we need full-time drivers, but what if we could build a reservist force of standby drivers here in Forest Hills? I think it can work, and I would like to encourage the members of the community and with the support of the board, that we pursue this kind of an idea. I put out a post sharing the accomplishment of my recent credential, and it's gotten an awful lot of attention, more than 23,000 shares or responses on LinkedIn, which is my more familiar network, some great attention on Facebook as well. And I would just say that we need to capitalize on the goodwill that people have with us and create the opportunity. I had not understood when I began this, that being a part-time driver was a possibility, and if I'm not mistaken, that is the case. When I put that word out, I've received many, many contacts from people saying, so could I do this too? And I think the answer is yes. So with that, I'd like to just put out a call, something called the Drive to Drive. How do we get more people to step up and make this big task small by sharing it together?
Paul, what would it take? I mean, this reservist force, so everyone pitching at me, you've got Route 64, I think, if I remember correctly. And so what would it take, what's in your mind for a reservist force who might, you know, stand in if you weren't able to do Route 64 for a couple of weeks because you sprained an ankle or whatever?
From what I understand, it is allowable that a driver can drive on a periodic basis to keep their proficiency up, to stay familiar with the route. And so we took the roles and cut them down into as little as one half of a day's responsibilities, so either a morning or an afternoon, and had people agree to work in one of those every month. To me, I think that could make a huge impact. There'd be also the additional advantage of more people like me in the district that understand and develop appreciation and respect for the drivers that we have, and what it takes to get the kids to school. So, you know, why not recruit 40 or more individuals and say, I can give four arms a month, you train me, you keep me proficient from a skill standpoint, and I'll drive a portion of the bullet?
And so the hurdle that we have to get through is the training needs, because you've got to be licensed and credentialed. And that process there, what, just talk to Luke one moment, what that can do.
Well, the first step is super easy, which is to get ahold of this manual, you can download it as a PDA, and prepare yourself to take the test over the secretaries there. There are four specific test components that you have to take and pass. The nice thing is that you can take it as many times as you need to until you pass, you don't get charged any money until you pass them all, and then once you pass it, I think the cost is about $38, you then have your learner's permit, the same way my kids had a learner's permit when they were 16, or I did when I was 16 or 15. And at that point then, the time behind the wheel or, you know, exposure to the bus really begins, and that's where our training staff come in. We have the, we have the machines, we have the personnel, it's a matter of designing the times that will work for people's schedules and just getting them through the process. It doesn't take an inordinate amount of time to learn how to do it. Many of us already drive and drive a lot, it just takes a little bit of additional exposure to understand what it takes to drive. It just takes a little bit of additional exposure to understand what it takes to drive a bus. So I would estimate that probably if I look back and figure out based on the time that was recorded for the training, it's probably 30 hours or 40 hours of actual, you know, trainer-led instruction and time behind the wheel.
I know members of our board are looking here. Under law, you cannot be both the employer and employee. So you can't be actively serving school board member and respond to Mr. Doyle's call, "Drive to Drive." But, well, I do want to, yeah, I do want to consider this in looking at our trainers. If I can fit in a training time on my lunch hour, whatever it be, and be one of those folks to pick up a four-hour shift, I'd be glad to donate that time and learn to become a bus driver. That's something I'd be happy to do. And I know all sorts of people in this world can do that. There are people who give up their time and take time away from their place of work to read to young kids, let's say. To volunteer in schools in different ways. Here's a way that people could do it. So the Drive to Drive program, we could just work together to find more ways to get that information out to our community. We can train multiple people on this.
And the other drivers will attest to it. You get a whole lot more back from the kids than you have to get from them. Seriously, every day, their energy is infectious and it's the right kind of infection.
My last superintendent's update, don't go away, Paul, just connected, is just to acknowledge all of our veterans. Paul is a veteran. We've got veterans all over our system. And another, a great way for our students to learn about sacrifice and selflessness, we have Veteran Day celebrations in all of our schools. And this year was no different. So congratulations to all of our veterans who are here. If you're a veteran of any of our branches of the armed forces, if you are fine to standing, then we can thank you. Paul's already standing. I'm sure there are all of you. So that's my brief update.
We had such a full last 10 or 15 minutes of debating, we need a brief recess. We would go into our public comments and this was portion of the meeting. Now, everybody's still ready to do that. Okay, then, let's go right ahead and start with our public comments. As I think many people know, this is an opportunity for our board to hear what our community wants to share with us, perhaps for our future attendance or discussions. It is not a discourse, it is an advisement. So we only take three minutes. Please share your name with us for the minutes. Superintendent B does try to respond to comments in his final report. He tends to take copies of notes and try to address many of the issues that might be raised. On occasion, we will look into them and respond in future meetings. But we do appreciate the community's thoughts and comments shared with us. And so if you, anything you would like, please feel free to step to the podium and share your name. And is our time of working, yes? The timer will be on the screen and we are really trying to be transparent with everybody. So if you see us getting two minutes and 45 seconds, if you could try to wrap up and know that I'm probably going to beep the microphone in three minutes or 302 or 303, so you get to finish your sentence. Okay? Thank you. Would anybody like to participate?
Hi, everyone. My name is Marsha Myers. My two daughters were adopted from China. They went through the Forest Hills Northern Schools from start to finish, and I will speak from that experience. I hear similar experiences from parents of kids of other non-white races. I want to talk about all parents' lives. This is a famous school. You know, kids are so smart. The damage to non-white kids comes in the form of jokes, not openly hostile bullying. I'm sure that this still happens. There's been nothing to stop it. Forest Hills Public Schools needs DEI. Asian kids are mocked every day, even sometimes by teachers or in school places. Here are some examples out of hundreds that I know. One Asian boy was fairly popular in the day. However, every time he walked down the hall at Forest Hills Northern High School, his friends, other athletes and cool kids yelled at him and joked, "Open your eyes," referring to his Asian demeanor. And then that, it was so funny. The joke was that he couldn't open his eyes, he had round eyes like the white kids. And there was something wrong with him. I watched multiple times as the boy would fake it. And as soon as the mockers passed, his face fell and he looked very sad for a while. One time I watched my daughter go again and squeeze his forearm. He had empathy and reassurance. He was also mocked for speaking Korean with his mother. But standing as kids choose for a minute, it's really important. He lived with people mocking his Asian appearance every day. And he had to pretend it was okay. There was a school musical, which the biggest joke in the production was that there was a secondary actor, an Asian kid, who had to come forward and say some lines about why he wasn't going to be a man, because Asians are not handsome and not up there and never go magically. That line brought down the house. Everyone roared people after. This was just another Asian kid having to decorate himself with very identity to deliver a joke. He was the joke in that play because of that line. I looked at one of my daughters like, "What?" But I said it with more slavery. And she said, "This is my life here." Another example. During class, one kid yelled out very loudly, "Go back to China," to my daughter. Everyone heard it. Teacher said nothing. No one had her back. She was crushed, rejected because of her identity. In front of the class, and the teacher did not have her back. My daughter tried to ask questions after, a different class. Teacher said, "You're Asian, you should already get this." He didn't. She didn't get her question answered and never asked him to do it again. Her grades wouldn't go down in that class. He made her feel like a dummy and ashamed. Because she was an average, you know, school achiever and not the stereotype of an A-plus student. Kids in Forest Hills Public Schools need to learn that any type of stereotype of any race is very painful. Even if the targeted kids appear to be based on a grudense-like smile on their faces to avoid obfuscation. They can't fight back. It's not physical violence. It isn't ultimately angry. You know, you can't apply the bullying policy to mean jokes. The kids dishing this out are just joking. You push back and you say, "What? You can't do a joke." "Oh, guys, just joking." There has to be more understanding and empathy taught about the non-white world, first of all. This is so important. Continue for 20, 10 more seconds. 10 more seconds, please, Marsha. There has to be more understanding and empathy taught about the non-white world, first of all, by teaching the complete natural history and assigned reading of material by non-white authors from their point of view. If you're worried that the white children are going to be picked on, give some credit to Forest Hills Public Schools.
Marsha, please.
Oh, okay. There's absolutely no way that these teachers are going to tear off white kids or white students. Trust them with DEI and are against the earth. Thank you, Ms. Myers.
My name is Cynthia Long. I started driving school buses when I was 39 years old. I'm on my 25th year. For most of you, calculating that, we're all the same. Red lights on a school bus mean stop. We know this kind of hard for some of you. You're not sure where the brake pedal is. When you go out in your car tonight, look down at your feet. It's the square pedal to the left of the long rectangle pedal. If you don't know your description of blocks and rectangles and stuff, ask your children now. We know who you are. We see you. We see you drop your children off at school and leave the school and drive past us with our red lights. We see your children doing it. They learn from you because we know children learn from their parents. Sad part is, it's awful also, some faculty members. In all this time, I've seen some good, some bad. And in the last five years, I've seen a lot of ugly. There's a lot of laws out there and we keep making more. But why? All of you know, red lights on that school bus means stop. Some of you get a bit confused because there's so many lights on a bus. But you don't get confused about a yellow stop ahead sign. You don't get confused about a yellow intersection. You're not confused with a stop sign on an eight-foot pole. You're not confused with a red light at an intersection. But you have an 11-foot by 40-foot object with four flashing lights. And not just one stop sign, but two flashing in front of you. And you have no clue what to do? We're not the Amazon truck transporting your children in boxes. We are a school bus transporting your children and your friends' children. We hear the excuses. It takes so long. You want to speed that up, have your child out at the bus stop, not waiting in your car. When we have to sit there waiting for them to get out of the car or out of the garage to get up to the bus. I know, we hear, "It's getting cold outside," or "It's cold." Buy them a coat.
Could you please just attach it so they were trying to be cautious?
Yes. You know, you guys are the first people to point a finger at a bus driver if something happens.
Cynthia, we need to wrap up.
Okay. While you're out there putting signs in your yards, and I don't care what you put, sign you do, put one in your yard that says, "Red lights mean stop."
Okay, Cynthia, we're going to end.
All right, I'm Cami, Forest Hills. So we just really wanted to talk about what equity looks like at Forest Hills. So I put out a vet call earlier this week to ask people what they're thankful for in the Forest Hills Public Schools, what programs they're thankful for that promote equity. I started. I said, "I'm thankful for the STARS program, getting my daughter to the reading level she needs to be at. I'm thankful for the Gateways program, for helping my son reach his full potential and keep him from checking out when curriculum came too easy for him and he got a little too chatty." And I wanted to share what other parents have told me. Somebody is very appreciative for GLI right now, both for parents and students. Another person was raving about the STARS program and actually ended up explaining it to a bunch of other parents who were interested. Links. This is a program I did not know existed, so I was really excited to hear about it. It's a peer-to-peer inclusion program that connects students to their peers. They're kind of a sibling-of-peer classroom. They have special days and they eat lunch together, play recess together, and their child really enjoys it. The Chinese and Spanish immersion programs. They help promote diversity in learning, appreciation, respecting other cultures. I did not know this, but a Western University professor comes to the high school to teach the students college-level Mandarin classes. The kids are considered Western University students and are able to enjoy some of the uni's perks, including access to the uni library, attending sports events. Upon graduating from high school, the students of the program would have earned a full college minor from a Western, from Western at no cost. And the credits should be transferable to other colleges as well, saving some money. That's always nice. And this person pointed out that you don't really find these kind of programs at public school districts. It's usually a private school that you would find, a immersion program. So a lot of people expressed gratitude for that. A lot of people expressed gratitude for the GRASP program that was introduced over the last few years to help avoid summer slide. Another one for GLI, and then peers-to-piers at Eastford Middle School. Project NEXT, learning in a non-traditional way, focusing more on collaboration, presentation, independent research to move a girl alive, work experience. Learning that we all need to work together as a team, give and take to be successful. Another parent mentioned after-school programs like Science Olympiad and Odyssey Divine, which I'm partial to because I have participated in that and gone to Worlds. They channel all types of talents, are completely inclusive and free, and celebrate all participants. Someone also added robotics to that list for an after-school program. More Chinese immersion. And then somebody expressed gratitude for the counseling department, who helped their daughter navigate a medical situation. They also expressed gratitude for GLI because it helps bring awareness of others' points of view. GSA, or GLI, Global Champions. The English Hunter Program, which supported kids learning languages quickly as possible when they transferred from Germany to the US.
I love the gratitude.
Yes. All the gratitude. And then there was just one thing. I heard there were a few cases of seizures and would love, if you could please elaborate on that during this meeting. Thank you.
My name is Valerie Kapalski, and I have children in Kindredge. I'd like to thank and commend the board and administration for their efforts during the fall term to provide safe, in-person learning environments, particularly for those of us who have high-risk children who completed a virtual year last year. And I come to you tonight to urge, encourage, and plead with you to continue that safe, in-person learning environment by implementing multiple mitigation strategies, including universal masking in our school buildings until our community transmission levels return to low. Yes, even when the Kent County Health Department lifts at the beginning of January. As of today, there are 356 inpatient COVID cases in Spectrum alone. Our seven-day average positivity rate is 22%. These are the facts, whether we like them or not, and our community is nowhere near low or moderate community spread. In the guidance for COVID-19 prevention in K-12 schools, the CDC recommends universal indoor masking by all students, staff, teachers, and visitors to K-12 schools, regardless of vaccination status. The guidance emphasizes implementing layered prevention strategies that students, teachers, staff, visitors, and other members of their households can continue to support in-person learning. The MDHHS COVID-19 guidelines for operating schools safely recommends that all schools adopt policies to require universal masking for all students, staff, and visitors, regardless of community transmission rate or vaccination status, and implement layered prevention measures. The Kent County Health Department School now recommends for schools to reduce disruption to in-person learning and create a safe environment for students, staff, and educators. They strongly recommend that we require universal masking of students and staff, following the guidance of the CDC. And the schools follow MDHHS recommendations for safer school operations during COVID-19. Please follow the science, the public health guidance, and our experts by maintaining multiple mitigation strategies, including universal masking, as long as the facts and data unfortunately is foreign and substantial. Thank you.
My name is Nick, and I'd like to start with a story about my third-grade daughter. Comes home from school a couple of weeks ago, really proud that she is learning about the Constitution and the separations of duties within the three branches of government. And the checks and balances that go along with those. Now, how do I, as a parent, whose daughter is excited about this and hearing that there are different branches of government, how do I explain to her that Forest Hills Public Schools has decided to listen to the executive branch of government, not give any credence to the judicial branch of government, and is going to move forward with a vaccination mandate for all of their staff? The Fifth Circuit Court of Appeals had issued a stay on that mandate citing grave constitutional concerns. But yet, apparently, you guys are going to move forward with that. Is that setting you guys up for lawsuits when we talk about constitutional rights? Why would you continue to enforce it when the courts have said it's not enforceable until further notice? Why did the board not vote on that decision? Does this fall under the unilateral powers that were delegated to Dan that the board never took back? I don't know what's going on, but I don't like it. I don't like that my daughter, who's all excited to hear about all these different branches of government, I now have to try to explain to her, "Well, unless you're an elected bureaucrat named Dan B., you don't have to listen to the judicial system." It's ridiculous. You guys need to stand up, be accountable, and lead. Don't enforce it until it's through the courts. Why would you? Why would you? And any staff member here, whether you're vaccinated or not, I would encourage you to not provide that information to the school district. It is a violation of your constitutional rights and weekly testing is a violation of the Fourth Amendment rights. So I really hope you guys get your heads on your rear ends and start to do some things that are actually in line with the law. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Stigian Springett, and I've been a resident of the Cascade for 38 years. I had two children go through the school district, both of whom graduated from Forest Hill Central, both who went to college, both who are working in their chosen profession, one in New York and one in Chicago, and both of whom are very grateful for the education they got at Forest Hill Schools and felt very prepared when they went to college with what they learned at Forest Hills. I have never spoken at a board meeting. This is not something I am at all comfortable with. But I felt very compelled to come and speak because of some of the negative issues and rhetoric I've heard and felt that I really needed to come and express my thanks to our board and support for what they have done. I also have been on the board of a nonprofit organization. And typically, people are so grateful that you've taken your time and given your talent to serve on a board. And the community is always very supportive, that people are willing to step up and help. And I don't necessarily always see that, but board members of our school who are entrusted with our children, and I can't think of a more important board to sit on and represent their well-being. So I'm just here to express my gratitude and thanks, and thank you for having Forest Hill to be the type of district that people want to move into because of our schools. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Stephanie Boone. I was born and raised in Forest Hills, and all six of my kids have attended FHPS. I might just be a white Dutch girl, but online pretty much every day, I am mocked just as well by many of you here, wearing shirts that talk about, you know, love and everything is happy-happy. So just so you know, contrary to what some of you here tonight might believe, I am not a hater of Forest Hills or any of you here. What I am is a sad and concerned parent. So much of what we're seeing in our schools today is reactionary to the political agenda of the day, and it's tearing friendships and families apart and dividing our community. It doesn't have to be this way. I'm asking each of you to do your duty and hold the line for our staff and our children. Please do not allow us to be divided on the basis of skin color, religion, gender, or my focus tonight, personal medical choices, all because the president, the NEA, or the NEA tell you to do so. Absolutely no one deserves to be forced into a medical procedure that they are not comfortable with, or else face possibly dire consequences. I brought a handout with me tonight called Stop the Shot. Any of you who are interested, don't take my word for it. There's a lot of factual information, if you'd like to get that from me. I'd be happy to share that. There's sources on it as well. The mainstream media doesn't want you to know the truth, but it's out there. And it's undeniable, and each person deserves the chance to be fully informed of the true risks versus benefits, and to make that choice for themselves free from retaliation, segregation, or discriminatory action. You don't have to be okay with this. You don't have to sit there silently. You don't have to feel responsible for forcing this decision on our staff and students against their will. As a board, you have the power to vote to protect our staff and our children from unconstitutional mandates, which have been ruled as such in court law by allowing for individual choice. Governor Newsom has already taken the tyrannical step to mandate the COVID vaccine on not just school staff, but the children in California too, beginning in January. It's already here for our staff, and we know it is coming for our children as well if you sit idly by. However, school boards in Mark Twain Union, Calaveras, Happy Valley Union, and many others, especially in Orange County, have voted against the requirement in California. The schools have stated that they are aware of possible fines, but they want to be able to sleep at night, knowing that they aren't morally and ethically responsible for dismissing individual freedom of medical choice. I'm praying for all of you that this will weigh heavily on your hearts and that you will stop being led astray by the things of this world and do the right thing for our community and our kids. Thank you.
I'm Yelson Forest Hills Parent, Mental Health Board Member and College Educator. These thoughts are my own. Thank you for taking the steps to support the well-being of students and I, their long-term success beyond your top academic program. I appreciate you hosting the recent opt-in GLI Champion Workshops for interested parents and staff who are helping kids prepare for life beyond the desk. I wish this was opt-out. I know there are many more programs like those that you spoke about tonight that are doing wonderful things for our kids. I also want to commend you for adding a robust collection of mental health resources to the district website, giving students and families a place to start when it comes to coping with their mental health through the pandemic. Please keep identifying more ways to support student and staff mental health, whether that be through more web content, guest speakers, or even small group counselor chats about the effects of tumultuous climate on their well-being. Last week, USA Today published a troubling article bearing the headline, "Culture Works Have Taken Hold of School Boards and Students Say Their Well-Being Is at Risk." The article says, "For students, much more is at stake now than politics. Bearing bans or threats of them have made school harder for kids." It also notes that adult disagreements have produced tensions for all. Decreasing signs of safety and inclusion make it harder for kids on the margins to learn. A teacher added, "We know you can't earn if you feel like you're under threat." Students say signals of support and acceptance are important to them, and they worry about adults trying to take those away. For example, simply having some student's pronouns recognized reduces their death attempts by half. I'm so sorry for any teachers out there who've tried to make a child feel seen by asking this simple question and been blasted. Educators follow data to support kids, not to force their beliefs. The article continues, "It's really scary because there are kids out there who go home to a family that's not as accepted. The only place they may have support is at school," said one teen. And now they're trying to take that support away from us. Clint Stetson, last week, the GLI training elevated the issue that almost 20% of FHPS students, including high performers, who entered college, come back the first year. Is there too much emphasis in the Forest Hills bubble on shielding kids from reality of an evolving society out there? Are we frying the right fish? Grades are so important, but I support you 100% in knowing our students need more than a stellar academic education. Based on what I see on the other side of the college classroom, and even in my role as a corporate internship leader, kids benefit from an earlier exposure to global awareness, self-awareness, coping strategies, and critical thinking to equip them for the college environment. At this stage, they also need their schools and educators free from threats. Thank you, board, for prioritizing the whole student, and think of the majority with your decisions and explore individual accommodations where they fit. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Mike Loyes, and my wife and I have four children in Forest Hills District. I just want to say, I'm concerned about what's at risk, they've talked about. Vaccines can and do cause harm. We don't consent to immunization or other procedures for our kids. Do not be like Grand Rapids Public School, which apparently hosted a vaccine clinic for five to 11s starting today. Do not. Our children are vaccine-damaged. We are not anti-vaxers, actually. We're ex-vaxers. We actually follow the science, and our children became damaged. You don't have to believe us. We know the truth. As of November 5th, and also to say what Nick said, do not mandate that for the staff, which is used to be a choice. As of November 5th, the VAERS site, which is a government site, listed over 18,000 deaths related to the COVID vaccine. That's 10 times more than any vaccine over the last 31 years. Again, we've heard a lot about facts. These are facts you can look up, openvaers.com. Openvaers.com, much more readable than VAERS. I highly recommend, if you really want to know the facts, you can find them there. There's things I'd like the board to recognize and to deal with. Do not sponsor any vaccine events. I encourage, this is critical. And if there's any talk of that, of any vaccine events, I'd like to understand, along with many other people, are there any public funds, or state funds, or federal funds tied to these types of events? Again, vaccines can and do cause harm. The parents and guardians and the staff should have medical freedom of choice. Really, let, leave it to the parents, individuals, to make their decisions. I think I heard, Dan, you talked about like learning. You should have choice. So just in your presentation today, yes, let's have choice. Dan, I certainly will look to hear you talk about some things tonight, but I do invite the other board members to comment. I read on the bylaws, each of you can do that. You have the ability to comment. You've heard a lot of things today. The question is, will you?
I'm Rachel Marling, and I was raised in this school district. Thank you for that opportunity to address Dr. Bean and the board of that. First of all, I wanted to comment, I was not planning on making comments tonight, but the courage that Chuck, another parent, spoke tonight about her children's experience touches on a very deep and painful part of my own upbringing that I have overcome. And I felt like this was an opportunity tonight to speak to you as a Korean Adaki and as a proud Asian American. It was not until I went to Tennessee University that I was able to understand and finally take pride in what Asian Americans have contributed to this country. We have just as much right to be at the table, conversation around what diversity and equity means. Often, Asian Americans are left out of dialogue about the experience of being a person of color. But we have as much to contribute in that conversation and the realization that Asian Americans have been in this country for more than 150 years and have contributed so richly to every aspect of American life. It's time for our school district, when you talk about the 21st century experience of our children, that the education has to go beyond, well, we teach them the math and the English. Those are important, but about what it means to respect one another. That respect cannot really be wholly realized unless children understand what others have done in this country that have helped to shape the American experience. If we are going to truly live out Dr. King's dream, that we will be judged by the content of our character and not by the color of our skin that has to be in the teaching of our children, and each one of us is responsible for being educated ourselves about what people of color in this country have endured historically, what they have overcome, and what they continue to contribute. That is not to say that it's about teaching our kids to feel guilty or hatred for themselves because of the color of their skin. I don't support that. There is a starting point to education around diversity that begins with education, and your role in helping to make sure that our kids have a well-rounded perspective. So much of what kids think in terms of their attitudes about race were born out of ignorance. So this time we have now, this kind of time in history, after we saw the xenophobia exhibited by so many, when COVID verted and the China virus and that whole labeling, hurt Asian Americans very deeply. The idea that we are to go back to where we came from. I am a person who belongs here just like anyone else. I'm an American citizen. There is no going back to where it came from. And we have got to start changing the narrative, and I ask for all of your help in doing that. If there's anything that I can personally do, any more than I can do, I serve on the Michigan Asian American Association Board and am vice president this year. And part of what I want to see increase is advocacy. On behalf of Asian Americans in this community, that we have a voice and a contribution to the election.
My name is Carol, and I'm from Plainfield Township. So I think everyone here can agree that we've got serious problems in our country, right? Overrun borders, riots in the streets, high gas prices, food shortages, division amongst families and friends over massive vaccines, chaos. So I ask you, how many of you are actually probing deeper to uncover why this is going on? Is anyone comparing what's going on here to what's happening around the world? Has anyone researched what's happening in Australia, Austria, or Canada? People are being controlled in every aspect of their lives, not just here, but all over the world. It is global. I would like to point out that a global government, or the Great Reset, is written about in the Bible. You don't have to believe me, you can research it for yourselves. 1st and 2nd Thessalonians, Matthew 24, Revelation 13, there are a number of places. In order for the Antichrist to come, we have to have a global world order, and that is what is being set up right now. Right now, we are free. We can choose what kind of job we have, house we live in, food we eat, and what power we drive. Once we are controlled globally, we will lose all of this. I am asking that everyone consider what we are headed for. In Revelation 13:14, it says, "Tell those who dwell on the earth to make an image to the beast who was wounded by the sword and lived. He was granted power to give breath to the image of the beast, that the image of the beast should both speak and cause as many as would not worship the image of the beast to be killed." Right now, a company in Ireland is hoping to bring the world's tallest moving statue in 21 cities in 2021, including Phoenix. Called the Giant, it's moving statue that's 10 stories tall and covered with millions of LED pixels that allow it to take the form of any person. According to a press release, the giant's arms and head can move in multiple directions and would change shape every hour as crowds gather below. This information can be found right on the MSN website. I'm not saying that this giant is the image of the beast, however, technology is leading us in that direction. Now I ask if anyone would like, please join me in praying for our country. Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight and thank you for your many blessings upon the country. We thank you for our founding fathers who worked so hard to make this a country of freedom and justice. We ask for forgiveness for a nation that has turned its back on you. Give us the strength to fight for freedom and the rights we were given by you, the one true God. We ask that you lead and guide the teachers here to do what's right for the children and their care. We ask for your guidance also in leading this board to do what's right for the families and the children in this school district. Soften their hearts and humble them. Give them wisdom and discernment in keeping your children safe and protected. Lord, we ask that you expose all evil being done in this country and reveal the truth. And lastly, we pray for the leaders of this country. We ask that you bring your Holy Spirit upon them and convict their hearts of any evil they are willfully doing to this nation. We ask that you guide them and bring them to salvation. As we pray in Jesus' name, amen. Thank you.
My name is Carol, and I'm from Plainfield Township. We're all raising our kids in this school district. I would just like to read this because it sounds so familiar to what's going on right now. And this was 62 years ago, Nikita Khrushchev's message. "Your children's children will live under communism. You Americans are so gullible. No, you won't accept communism outright, but you will keep feeding us all doses of socialism until you finally wake up and find you already have communism. We will not have to fight you. We will sow weak in your economy until you fall like overripe fruit into our hands. The democracy will cease to exist when you take away from those who are willing to work and give to those who will not." This is where we are today. It's here, this administration, this Biden administration is bringing us to this right now. And you are a part of it, considering these agendas in the school district of the curriculum. There's eight levels of control. Number one is healthcare, controlled healthcare and you control the people. Number two is poverty, increase the poverty level as high as possible. Poor people are easier to control and will not fight back when you are providing everything for them. Debt, increase the debt to an unsustainable level. That way, you are able to increase taxes, and this will produce more poverty. Gun control, remove the ability to defend themselves from the government. That way, you are able to create a police state. Welfare, take control of every aspect, food, housing, income of their lives, because that will make them fully dependent on the government. Education, take control of what people be and listen to and take control of what children learn in school. Religion, remove the belief of God from the government and schools because the people need to believe in only the government, knowing what is best for the people. Class warfare, divide the people into the wealthy and the poor. Eliminate the middle class. This will cause more discontent, and it will be easier to tax the wealthy with the support of the poor. I ask you to not implement- I ask you to not implement these socialistic ideas of mandating masks and shooting our kids up because I'm concerned about my two grandsons getting myocarditis from these shots. I don't agree with it. I think it's not right. It's not right to mandate anything. You should give these parents the choice over their own healthcare, their kids and family. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Paul Waidler. I have four daughters in this district. Two in high school, middle school or elementary school. My wife Lisa and I strive very hard to set expectations for empathy, love, hard work, perseverance, resilience, and self-reliance. Every day, I send them out of the house. With that in mind, every single day, it's a challenge. Everybody knows this. This room is full of joyful stories and painful stories. We have our own as well. But we're not for people like Stephanie Boone, who came to our aid a couple of times, helped us get through some challenges. We probably wouldn't have kids in the district, but we're keeping them in here now for a particular reason. It's getting very difficult, obviously. There's a lot of contention. I'm not here to argue points on any of the issues that we hear about every week here. It's my first time speaking at a board meeting. I just wanted to, first of all, say thank you. It appears that we've got some traction on some key issues that have been operating fires for the last several months. Fortunately, I think that it probably took a recall initiative to get that traction going. Images perception there. I hope there's more to come. I know there are other higher players burning that we'll continue to discuss as the months go by. But I do have one to ask tonight. It's around transparency. We talk about it very vaguely from time to time here. There's a lot of pressure on you folks to make decisions from all sides. I understand that. I'm not going to push you either way, but I think if I could ask one thing, it would just be that you involve the community more in those difficult decisions. Resolve yourselves of that pressure to make the one call by yourself in a vacuum. We're all kind. We're out caring. We're all here for the betterment of our children, humanity. I think we have a lot of value and expertise in these areas. If you would, please just consider involving us. I hear people frequently talk about the channel of change being a lunch with Mary, a coffee with Mary. We had a great conversation. It felt good. It was an hour and then silence. No real response, no action. We've got some action. I think things are moving forward. I look forward to see how we respond in the near future with potential for mandates and how we respond to people who are displaced by vaccination reports. Hopefully, we plan for it.
Thank you, Paul.
Good evening. My name is Jo. I've never been to a school before in this life.
Jo, could you please share your listening also? Could you please share your last name also?
No.
Nice.
Only point number six. I've decided to comply because I've never been here before and just reading through the rules, I do like to be compliant. But I'm reading something that I'd love some clarification on. Board members may ask questions of the speakers but are not required to answer questions from a statement that responds to a public comment. Does that mean that you choose not to respond to questions? Or you won't? Or you don't like respond or write the letter afterwards? Or clarify that? Anybody?
Are you doing your public comments, Jo?
Are you telling me you won't answer? Answer with a clarification of the rules?
I'm making sure every time because this is our meeting required by the state. We have an agenda and we conduct business on it. We enjoy and appreciate when our community shares stuff with us and then towards future agendas. And we do respond to those in various ways.
I'm trying to acquaint myself with this board because my tax dollar hangs from the school. Tony, I've never been here before. This is the first time ever that I've seen, you know, what your rules are. And I'm asking for clarification. That says you are not required to answer.
So if you'd like to finish comments, then just request the clarification.
This is a yes or no.
The answer is this is our meeting.
It's a primary.
Okay, thank you, Matt. I'm done, Jo?
No, I'm not.
I answered your question, though.
No, I didn't. This is a yes or no. Do you not feel compelled, as you sit here and talk about inclusion, communication, do you feel that you don't have to answer the questions from the public, yes or no?
Public comments is a time for the public to provide comment. It's not a time for a dialogue. We can do that. It's just not at this point in time. We're at the wrong meeting. We can have a community forum, have dialogue on all these issues. Public comment isn't the time on the board's agenda. We have rules. We can schedule community meetings. We'd like to talk to anyone.
And we have scheduled.
I just ask you one simple question. Do you not feel compelled to answer questions that are posed to you from the public?
The board doesn't respond during public comments.
Do you respond at all?
Yes, all of them.
How and how is that response? Then I get to ask you respectfully. Send them an email and reply to them all the time. Ask and answer. A comment is a comment. A question is a question. Not? No, yes. Yeah, we're good as a board if we won't answer. You sure that answers?
Hi there, Katie Morse. Forest Hills Eastern, area here. How are you doing? Hi, ladies. So anyway, I just wanted to... Excuse me, Dan?
Go right ahead, Katie.
Hi, I'm just, anyway. I just want to go ahead and just address just the questions. I know there's been a lot of rumors circulating through social media regarding Forest Hills Eastern, Forest Hills Northern, a lot of seizures, a lot of speculation. Just something that Stephanie Boone actually had written, my mom actually sent it to me. She just wanted, she mentioned that, are you aware that three people at Forest Hills Eastern have had vaccination-related seizures these past couple of weeks? And these are her words from online. This is not anything I'm making up. I just want to make sure, find out if it's true. You know, we certainly do need to address this. One teacher just had one while driving and got to an accident. I'm not going to go about what she said about Northview and people over there. Not going to go about with Nick Pril, how he's trying to sabotage right now his public schools and their mask surveys. But what I do want to say is I appreciate the Board of Education because I know you guys are listening to true professionals. I know you're listening to true medical professionals, true legal professionals, and you're not listening to the Google researchers that we have over here. So just to circle back through, just want to make sure we just have some comments from leadership at the schools, maybe address these rumors, put it to rest, and actually use science to make decisions. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kathy. I actually want to hijack all this idea of parents coming together and working with the board. And clearly, there's a lot of advice here. I think it would be fantastic if we could get parents from multiple perspectives to team up with the board. I'd love to have teachers, maybe even students involved. I think that would be a great kind of idea to see if we can start bridging some of the divide. I know that's probably not a very welcome thought right now. But I personally, you know, this is the third time tonight that I've heard of parents wanting to reach out to board members and trying to team up and work through problems. And I think about how we got to where we are. And I think it's because parents really haven't been interacting with the board enough to be able to help steer and drive and just help form the school that it is. And I don't see us getting out of this without all of us starting to work together. And I don't think it would matter whose cabooses were in the chairs, whether it's yours or somebody else's. There's still going to be thorns poking you in the tush from one side or the other. And I really only think that the only, you know, if you all close your eyes and you think about talking to your kids at night, that's why we're all here, because of that. And it doesn't matter, you know, which side of the room you're on. That's ultimately why we're all here. And your board, you guys are so lucky to have so many parents who give a damn. Now you just got to try and come together and figure out how to make it all work. And it is not going to happen if we're not helping to provide the solution. We're all sitting there yelling at you to figure it out. Well, I own a business and that is not how my business works. If someone has an issue, they need to come with the issue and say, hey, what do you think of these ideas to help solve it? And I might tweak those or say, I love it. Or, yeah, I don't think that's going to work and this is why I don't think it's going to work. But we work through everything together. And I can tell you that change happens very easily when you have a lot of people on board. Change is very difficult when you're just dictating and telling people, well, this is how it can do it. So I would love to be able to see the board say, we want to create some either parent board or parent-teacher board or parent-teacher-student board, whatever, I don't care. But there has to be some kind of true inclusion.
Hi, my name is Scott. And here is a concern, citizen, parent, all of that. You know, I like the spirit of the last speaker. She spoke a lot about, she spoke about the middle. And I see a divided room here, you know? I see a whole bunch of shirts that say love, hope, equality, inclusion, kindness. And those are great words. I love those words. You know, I have hope. I have love. I hope for equality. I'm a kind person and I like to include other people, even if I don't agree with them. And I think we have an issue with disagreement in this room. I think there's really a room divided here. I don't see a lot of hope or love or inclusion or kindness in this room. And that goes on both sides. You know, I'm one of the people that really doesn't want my child back to me. I'd like to have that choice. I don't want to teach my child that they're an oppressor because they're not. I don't teach that. I love all kinds of people. You know, we've heard voices up here talking about discrimination against Asians. Why? Why would we do that, right? Where would our kids learn those things? You know? And that's not right. I don't agree with that either. I certainly don't agree with critical theory. Okay, I've read it. Herbert Marcuse, Angela Davis. You guys have read these people before. I don't know if you have, if you haven't. But critical theory is a dangerous idea. Essentially, it just substitutes Karl Marx's bourgeois, bourgeois zippers, the proletarian oppressor and oppressor. I mean, it's a terrible thing and it's really dangerous. We shouldn't teach our kids that. We shouldn't teach our kids to hate at all. My challenge is to everyone in this room, why don't you invite somebody over for dinner that thinks differently? That'd be a good idea. Have a conversation, right? It's kind of a hard thing to do when we're hating everybody, isn't it? I think we all need to maybe step back a little bit, understand that we think differently. We all have different ideologies. We all have different hopes, right? We love different things. Love, the Greeks have four words for it.
You finished your please scan?
Yeah. I thank you for your time. That is just a message for everybody to hear.
Hi, I'm Josh Waneki. I'm a proud parent of two kids. I met them both in the Chinese immersion program. It's been a great program for our family. I'd like to give a shout out to Principal Tim Shaw, who's always been incredibly responsive. I'd like to give a shout out to Superintendent Beam, who's been incredibly responsive to you. I'd like to give a shout out to the board, who has a great website, fhts.net, that if you look on there, gets all sorts of information. If you scroll down to the bottom, you will see that there is a section called Contact the District. I would like to thank them for providing the address where they can be reached. I would like to thank them for providing the phone number, 616-493-8800, where they can be called and we'll answer your questions when you call. I'd like to thank them for providing the staff directory, where all of the board members can be found, as well as administrators of different schools that can be contacted with your questions. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Sarah Easter. I remember this time. I forgot the last time. And I just wanted to just let you know that I love the comments that you're making and I have the same concerns about the bifurcation of our community. And I just wanted you to know that you're right on point that we are going to get together. And I've had the opportunity to reach out to Stephanie Boone. And there's a small group of us that are going to meet this week. We have not invited the board or our superintendent yet, but I hope that we'll be able to do that. But the point is, we have different opinions, but we all agree, there are things that we all agree on. And there are a lot of energy and a lot of money that's out there convincing us that there's more that separates us than divides us. And I believe that that's absolutely false, that there's more. We all believe in the same things. And I'm so proud that Stephanie has got a group of people that she's invited. I don't really have a group of people because I don't have people. But we're just going to sit down and try to figure out what are the things that you notice? What do we have in common? And what are the things that we're really struggling with? And what are some ways that we can address those? And kind of find a common solution? If we can't, then we'll agree to disagree. But the idea is, nothing happens when we sit and point fingers and we say terrible things to each other. But reasonable people can get together and have reasonable conversations. I think there's hope. Or there's no hope that people vanish. And so I just wanted you to know, it's happening. And as we started, we started very small because there's some fear on both sides about how is this going to end up? And will it be civil? And will there be something productive that happens? But as this grows, we'll expand this and invite more people. And I think that we will become people that are united. And I think that we will become people that are united. We're here because we love our kids. So I just wanted to tell you, you're right on point. It's going to happen.
Good evening. My name is Eva Lachey. And I'm a Cascade Township resident. And I raise five children that come through the district. And I've been coming to the board meetings for about 20 years. And I think what I want to encourage you, as I'm sitting there, I've only probably spoken probably about twice in these 20 years. But as I've seen and what I see over the process, I just want to encourage you to utilize another platform so that as you see, there are people that do not understand that this is a board meeting. And as far as with comments, and those are particular rules that you have. What I think they're asking is, give them a platform so that they can come and ask questions and receive comments. And you have that, we have that opportunity. The story of practices, the fishbowl. I know we've had community conversations. I tend to know. But there has not been one where the board can volunteer and come be a part of those conversations. And there's so much that's going on. Don't get me wrong. I know it's risky. But this is a platform where people come and speak and some testify, some grandstand, some have very good points. But it's not being addressed, so it just becomes a frustration. Because even when I know you try to give the rules, it's important to give the rules every time. Because you're here today, there's so many people that have never been to the board meeting. So they don't know that you all do not respond. This is your board meeting. It is a business meeting. And so many people don't know the rules. So when you don't know the rules and you don't know the opportunity that you have, this is not the platform. So I would encourage you as a board to create a platform so that the transparency can be there and so that some of the questions can be answered. It's going to be risky, but I know you can do it.
Good evening. My name is Nancy Tully. I have two daughters in the school district. Tonight, I have a, as a parent, as a resident, ex-payer. And most importantly, the first generation of illegal immigrants. It took me five years to go through all the community contacts. 20 years ago. And I'm very concerned with our southern border right now. There are, the border's open. Illegal immigrants coming into this country. As a legal immigrant, I understand where they're coming from. But every country needs border, needs protection. And recently, I heard from a church that illegal immigrants have enrolled in our school district. And that's what I've heard. Among the board and administration, during a comment to confirm, do we have illegal immigrants enrolled in our schools? If they, if there are, please let us know. Are there being correctly vetted? Are there any adults who are disguised as minors? Were they gang members that being enrolled in our schools? If we don't have those students, as a board and our commendation, do you have a plan? Or do you know in the future, how many students will be enrolled? And how many students will be funded? And are we going to give back the tax dollars that we are paying? Are these going to be competing with all of our children's funding here? And that is, I like to hear that. And the second part, I do want to comment. Our 21st century learning. I think I'm very proud our district continuing to grow in that area. It is, being a first generation legal immigrant from China, I know, you probably all know, being a Chinese, we value education and we value American education. That's why I wanted to come to this country. That's what made me proud to be in this school district. And I'm proud this 21st century learning project that you're continuing to pursue. And I'd be very much to be excited. And if you need any support from a parent, I'd like to be part of it. Thank you.
Somebody else?
I'll go. Man, I have a super power. I'm Shaw Gourier. Nice to meet you all. I actually wish I was at home tonight. I keep thinking that things are going to change. I keep thinking that America, the America I knew and grew up with, is somehow going to reconstitute itself. I love the banter that I heard from the board tonight. You guys were the most animated that I've seen in a while. And I think it's because you were talking about something that you love, right? You're passionate about educating our youngsters. There wouldn't be the need for a divided room if you guys were stepping into the vacuum, right? I know we're all familiar with the quote, nature pours a vacuum. Something's always going to rush in to fill it. And what's building right now is the anxiety and uncertainty that Superintendent Bean was alluding to. Now, so you got two words out of your students during your workshops, right? Boring and then anxiety provoking. That's a shame because I got to think that that was pre-COVID. And I got to think that it's changed dramatically over the course of the last two years. This is COVID-19 that we're talking about. We're going to go into 2022 pretty quickly. And the fact that the anxiety of these mandates are still hanging over our heads, that should be appalling to everyone in the room, right? This is crazy. We're Americans. We're blessed with ingenuity and the benefit of critical thought. Why have we not solved this in a more diplomatic fashion that is more concerned with the rights of parents? You send these kids home to face a divided household because you're placing them under fear and anxiety. Now, I also like the fact that you called out the veterans today. And I got to admit, man, for the first time in my life, I didn't want to stand up. I've been in a running battle internally since this all started. My father was a veteran. My father was a Marine. My father was mandated by the Veterans Administration to receive the vaccine and he died five days later. He went to bed the day he was vaccinated and died five days later. And we were told that there was no correlation. And I got to tell you, I wish I wasn't here because no one should be put under that kind of pressure. That's two years of pressure on my household, of watching these mandates step closer and closer to my family. And what choice am I left? You know, I also had the thought that, hey, I'd love to volunteer as a bus driver, you know? But would I need to be vaccinated? That was my immediate next thought. Could I serve in a capacity as a bus driver and remain unvaccinated? I don't know. You guys need to do the right thing. Give parents back the choice and the opportunity to demonstrate to their kids the lead by example premise that I heard on the board, right? Lead by example. We all have convictions. There are ways to make this work in our country without this kind of anxiety. Thank you.
Somebody else? All right, thank you for participating in public events.
Do you read for show? One more, one more. There's always last one. Never prepared. Um, do you mind? No. Uncle, my name is Anna Chino. And I love the ladies today. Actually, I love. Yes, it is huge division because. I would love to just share some information about vaccines injured.
We need to hear you back here.
Some people may not believe. Some people may laugh. Some people may be in the sort of experiments. I did. My kids are vaccinated injured. My kids cannot wear masks. My kids cannot do many things. Because this is what we are doing right now. We are dividing. My kids would love to come back to forest, get back to school and continue that friendship with friends. They can't do that because they cannot wear masks. And now vaccines. Apparently, we are not forced to take the vaccine. But that's not really true. I have so many disemoyes of vaccine injured kids. Please take the time and just read them. I know those families. I was volunteering for over two years for Michigan Vaccine Choice. Choice. We are all about choice. But many times we were called anti-vaccine. We can't. We made our choices. We listened to our physicians and what they did to us. I believe, sorry, let me spell it again. We just want to share information with you that vaccines injured exists. And now with those clinics, which one we are bringing to schools, it's more risk. I just want to add to this. That if you're deciding to or choosing to vaccinate your kids, it's okay. But please, be informed about the risks. Because you cannot act like me or other families. My kids are still lucky. They can walk, talk. They are alive. Any kids want to work? Thank you for your attention. And please, please, and one more, please. Choice is the best way for everyone.
Funny I'm speaking either, but my name is Sylvia Duffy. And I am an Army veteran, disabled. And served for 12 years with three years in Iraq. Thank you for your time. Part of my issues is that I actually can't wear a mask for my disability. But one of the things that harmed me to this day was the data. I was given all of the shots that was required in the military. And it's a prevalent issue that we'll never resolve. There is risk. And even after it injured me, I still did it to my own child, you know? And I lost a child to it because of it. And almost lost my second one because of it because I kept listening to doctors who think they know everything. They just are taught certain things in school. And if you really look it up, pharmaceutical companies are the ones who own the medical schools. So they have interest in teaching them these things. There's other things that are out there that have been covered up. And like, our education system is so skewed to this pharmaceutical world where it's all about germ theory. But there was another theory, and I just wanted to share real quick, that there is a terrain theory. Look it up. You weigh the options, germ theory, terrain theory. There might actually be another way that we haven't been taught. And part of the germ theory is to elicit fear, to make everyone so scared of each other and scared of humanity that we've lost our touch and our ability to be human again. Where everyone's wearing masks and disguising themselves and not allowing themselves to breathe the air that we're supposed to breathe. I'm not afraid of whatever it is that they're trying to do because I believe actually in the terrain theory that these viruses aren't dangerous. What's dangerous is what they inject into your body. That is what causes the responses inside your body to create sickness. All these people now that are getting sick, thousands and thousands are dying because they've been injected. All these babies that are being lost in the womb. All these babies that are being lost because the mother's breast milk is infected. Like, we've completely polluted our bodies with toxins. Toxins are what are killing us, not viruses. If we eliminate the toxins that go in our body, we have a chance of survival. But if we keep pushing this vaccine on the entire world, then the whole world is doomed. We just need to study, learn.
Hi, Catherine Armstrong. Oh, Dr. Catherine Armstrong. I have four kids in Forest Hills, actually, my home city. My PhD is in biochemistry, specifically biophysical immunology, specifically T-cell receptor response. Vice President of Sciences at a major corporation in town. Sarah reached out to me earlier about meeting up. We talked for about an hour and a half. Over an hour, for sure. We heard people talk about even the education, about including people in their expertise. We heard Dr. Rosie speak. We heard the lack of respect. And so what I would say is, for all of the parents who are concerned, speak to your physicians. Speak to your pediatricians. I understand there is concern around vaccines. That's not something for the board. That has nothing to do with the board, just like many other things, like southern borders, which you have no control. What I would specifically ask of individuals in this room who are more science minded is to please remember to not give in to the fear. It's ironic to be preached out about fear by people who are living in fear. Theirs is a self-reported system. I can go on there today and report that I stubbed my toe.
Fine.
And you're interrupting all.
Get her into the microphone.
You can report anything you like because I can have any assumption, like many people in this room have done. What we need to be doing is focusing on listening and trusting our colleagues and trusting those who are doing everything they can, like Rosie, who are here to save our kids. And we need to stop trying to accommodate individuals who consistently talk about wanting to involve expertise or meet in the middle or find harmony, but continually disparage science and disparage those of us who have done nothing in our whole lives but dedicate ourselves to science promoting humanity. So Sarah, with utmost respect, this is why I declined your invite. And I hope that you can see tonight why I developed a nasty opposition conversation.
Would I be able to participate? Then we will go ahead and we manage our consent agenda, for which I'd please need a motion to be approved.
I approve Consent Agreement Items 882.
Thank you. Are there any items on the consent agenda and if any board member would like to call for special consideration? If not, are there any items you would like to call?
Simply that we are approving the deployment of our Director of Communications. It's great to have someone in a communications role after many months where that's that big. So it's very happy for me.
Thank you.
This is below square three, the 215, or 215. Yes, no, thank you. We have a agreement of bills. We also have the central mill renovation. Several construction updates, which I'll cover in a minute. The central mill renovation. We put out for bid and it come back at 8.24 million. We always go with the lowest bid category, except for one this time because we've been working on our PA system, upgrading them in all of our buildings. And so we won't move that one a little bit more, but we're trying to keep it the same. The same system we're going to put in Orchard View. So this is doing our second test to the PA system. So looking for approval on that 8.2 million. Funding comes from our 2021 capital fund project. But the Orchard View was one of our first projects that we started for the 2019-ish? 2020, okay. Sorry, I always blur together with COVID, so. But the entrance of anyone who's been there was kind of over to the west side. It got very congested with traffic. So they did a lot of reconfiguration and it's moved to the south side, which is beautiful to venture here. So it's nice and easy for, not only for the truck in circle, but parking. There are quite a few phases to this project. I've been the last two of them. Two or three.
We finished up 4B and 5B. Five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Will be done summer of 2020.
There's so many phases to everything. I'm sure. I think you talk to my kids for goodness sake. So anyways, it's very exciting to see this first, kind of all the talk that we've been having, of all the updates, kind of like a first glance into a picture. So it's been fun to see. We also had some fun on planning that we've been doing with Aiden Nesta, Pyridge, and the administration building, which is exciting. the administration building, which is exciting, it's going to be starting to get relatively soon. We have some bus purchases, for a total of 663,000, which we're replacing six buses, purchasing from Midwest Transit, using, we use the Michigan Bus, School Bus Official, excuse me, Michigan School Business Official, which basically gives us the purchase, we have purchasing program pricing, and this again comes from our 2021 Capital Projects Fund. The summer property tax resolution, this is an annual resolution, the board needs to approve, so we can levy taxes in the summer. The city of GR is 100% in the summer in Township, Grand Rapids Township Cascade, our 50% summer, 50% winter. This is only one-time tax authorization, so basically we're looking for the approval now, so we can do it this one time. Then there's a tax property refund for $46.34 to Ada Township. So those are the big news items. Any questions for us, Ms. Gregory?
Is that what we're doing, should I have the curriculum to me or her, please?
Ah, it was Mrs. Hawn, thank you. We had our monthly meeting last week as well, starting with finance update, the call just went through, but I was particularly excited about the Orchard View office being open. And I usually anticipate the upcoming virtual tour, that we will be able to see, like we had with some of the projects, about the work at building that's central now. For our instruction update, we had Christine Yeldin and Tasha James present an update on our multi-tiered system of supports. So we use FTSS to make sure that we're taking care of our kids academically, behaviorally, and socially, emotionally. Every student is unique, so we meet kids where they are and then move forward from there. And we kind of looked, I love this idea, you've seen in education, pyramids like this, and what Tasha and Christine had done is basically opened that pyramid. And typically you've got small issues in the end, and most kids kind of on a bridge of the spectrum. Much better model, I think, than the pyramid that we typically talk about. Because we're focused on what our students need to be successful, MTSS helps make sure that we're really addressing everything from that far left end of the scale, which tends to be the year old, which is the way of education, all the way up to the far right end of the scale, which are high achievers, babies, kids, and then everything else on that spectrum. Our presenters took us through the last three years of behavior incidents, so we kind of focused on that this time. Over the last three years. So in 2019, not very much difficulty K6, like behavior issues. 2020, for obvious reasons, almost nothing, because we're not here. And then in 2021, not surprisingly, some jump. Kids haven't been around each other, they forget how they react. So as a result, we use the PBIS system, positive behavioral intervention and supports, and altered six subparts to help address incidents like this. As a result of where we are, our K6, because there's kind of a focus in this year on social emotional learning competencies, to help get our students to go back to where they were, where they want to be, so that it doesn't get way too complicated. We help kids on, as I said, all is all. That's very much the approach of our educators. And we are looking at everything from spectrum, so helping students who have behavioral needs, all the way up to helping make certain that high learners and even talented kids are challenged. So I was reported on multiple instructional items at our meeting. First, we've completed the level learning instruction and teaching, training with instructional coaches in every building. Checking in the teachers, they are very excited about this, because Lline provides pathways, strategies, and resources to address identified issues in our K6 buildings. We also have just had GT, our Avis Cluster Training. I want to use this opportunity to give a highlight and a thank you. Once again, big shout out to our teachers. All of our teachers are incredible, this particular group. I'm focusing on now our cluster teachers, where we have clustered students who have contested and identified Avis. So as you know, not just busing, there's great pressure on the system right now because of sub-shore issues. So we've got a tall boil of busing, we've got folks who would like to do the same thing, to be able to come in and help relieve that pressure. But because of the pressures throughout the county, it's not just Forest Hills. Forest Hills actually, I believe, is still at the top of the county in terms of fill rate, but it's still not great, we need subs. But because of that, we, it's impacted everything from pullouts to training. So we tried something to confront and cut across our fingers and hope to work, offered this training after school, and kind of thought, you know, we get this, have those teachers, that'd be great. Day one of the training, 25 of our cluster teachers were at the training. Day two, we have 27. So a huge shout out to these teachers. After a long day of teaching, they came and they brought their own funds into training that was professional and incredible. This was incredibly helpful. And just as a reminder, our cluster kids are not adults in these classrooms. So the training is invaluable because it benefits all the students in those classrooms, not just the students identified as Avis. So very successful and very proud of our teachers for doing that. Regarding high school science, in fact, there have been curriculum changes, I think kind of addressed parts in earlier remarks. We have state, federal changes that have impacted us. We are looking at communication channels, just to be certain that not just our parents, but our counselors, understand all the pathways available to our students, to make certain that as they go through their high school curriculum, they get what they need and we certainly provide that. And then as part of our continued work on making certain that our schools are filled with excellence, engaging local educators at all, interviews are progressing for a media specialist. And part of the media specialist will be assisting with reviewing reading materials available in our schools. We've been working on a book review process for some time. This is a great example of where we do very much partner with our parents, with our community. And obviously, the seven of us can partner with the parents of 9,300 kids, but we have a parent group who has been involved, helping us, having this conversation, this ongoing conversation about reading materials. We have been working on a book review process for some time, this is not, this is not a fire recently lit, we've been working on it for a period of time. In collaboration with the ISD, because this is a machine around county, the policy has now been run through our ELA teachers and our administrators, and in verbal form with this parent group of concerned parents that we've been working with for months. And the next step is going to be for them to see that in writing, to review that document they get this month. And we're, take our time, make sure we do it right. This is important. Finally, our last piece of business, we have completed, speaking of books, we've completed the 30-day review of the Rent Collector by Cameron Wright, which is for use in grade 12 AP Lit at Central High. So our only action items were approving the minutes of our October 13th, 2021 meeting, and recommending approval to the board, as the entire board of the Rent Collector by Cameron Wright, for use at Central High in AP Lit. That was our meeting.
Any questions?
I think that we're ready for our call, please. Um, Dr. Nelson?
Yes.
This is Greg.
Yes.
This is Adam Carter. This is Val.
Yes.
This is Greg.
Yes.
This is Hawn.
And this is Katie.
Thank you. Can I record with your report, please?
I will. Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. You know, I just want to speak to, first of all, the things that we have in common are so much greater than anything that could fight us. I am convinced of that. There's what we share as human beings, and what we want for our kids and the kids of our community is so much in common. So I stand always ready to work with anyone. I am in this role as a steward of the Public Trust, and we've got a big community, we've got a whole country that, we've got strong opinions on all sorts of things, and we're all tired. We're all tired of dealing with something that is new to all of us. I'm convinced, as I look at kids each day, they're doing a lot better than us adults. Kids have to adapt all the time. Every year, new routines, different teachers, things like that. Adults, we get stuck in our ways a little bit more, so adaptation is harder, and it wears on us, I know. There clearly are groups, maybe groups more outside of our own country, that would love nothing more than to tear apart the great things about America by pitting us against one another. So I'm always careful. I'm always mindful that on any social media piece, there's, could be anyone from around the world who said, well, let's just inject something else in here to make the discord even more vicious. And so anything we can do to turn down that heat, I am fully supportive. I talk to superintendents all around the state, talk to, I've got communication from my statewide Association of Superintendents and the National Association of Superintendents, all dealing with these similar polarizing issues all over the place. So I do think there's something bigger afoot, but I think it's a hold onto us here in our own community to do what we can, to come together, to do the best we can for our kids. That's what I am passionate about and committed to. Board meetings, in my mind, aren't great places to unpack all this stuff, because there isn't, board meetings have never been designed under state law as a place for big deliberation. Instead, what we've got under state law is the state says, hey, we've got these institutions called public schools, they're going to be run by the community, and so the community will elect representatives. And then the board meetings are a place for the board to come and do its business. But the dialogue piece, that's clearly, and many speakers spoke to this tonight, that that's clearly something that we have to do more, we have to provide more opportunities for people to interact and have dialogue. You should know that Mary Bob is a board president, I've served, this is my 21st year as a superintendent. I have never seen a board president put in more time to correspond with every single member of the community that reaches out to her. The level of time that's been, the intensity that's been brought here, I've never, ever seen before. So we are trying. What I think some of the challenges have been, and I've seen it over and over and over, is that there are strong passions on an issue that is a one way or the other on so many of these pieces. And decisions have to be made. The lack of a decision doesn't work. And in this case, decisions can have consequences that can be life or death. And so it's, it's been very, very challenging to work through all these pieces. But please know that as a school district, and I know the seven members of the board that the community has set forward, remember, the community votes the members of the board, the school district doesn't protect the board members. The community votes the board members forward, and the school district and all the staff work with the members of the board, but I can tell you that these members of the board have been focused on doing the best thing that we possibly can for all children, knowing that many of these decisions aren't going to please all the people that exist in the community, and this is the problem we see across the country. But I can also tell you that none of these board members are seeking to duck dialogue in any way, shape, or form. It appears that way at a board meeting, because this isn't, the setup that we have for public comment is exactly that, for the public to come and talk about anything. And if you look at community meetings all over, that's what happens. And the piece for decades and decades and decades is the public comments, and then the board goes about and does its business. But what we need is forums where people can come together and have a dialogue, and have dialogue with me, or members of the board, or things like that. So we've talked about that, and we'll look at those pieces to continue that. What I experience all the time is people saying, let me talk with you so you will agree with me. That's most often the interactions I have with people. Again, let me get your ear so you will agree with me. And where I think we need to get to is to deeper understand some of the things we might not be able to. There are some who want, in a superintendent, someone who's, you know, going to go out and make national news by defying laws and orders that I swore I don't uphold. I'm not that superintendent. And, and so when we have a public health code that provides authority to public health officials, it's been around for decades, the public health code, our set of laws that grant that authority. So these are, these are pieces that, again, perfectly willing, and I've spent lots of time, lots and lots of time, talking to folks, listening to folks, engaging in dialogue, happy to do more. We receive FOIA requests every day. Our FOIA, the folks in our Human Resources Office aren't able to do the basic work of Human Resources because of the Freedom of Information Act requests that continue and continue and continue. And, but again, we're happy to work with anyone to provide information and dialogue anytime. It's nothing that we're trying to hide, but what it is that I think people are seeking is for an authority figure to decide to their point of view. And I think that's where the tension comes in so much. Let me, let me speak to a couple of questions that came up around seizures. We've not seen any seizure activity that is unusual to us with a district of about, you know, more than 9,000 students. We have students who have medical conditions that produce seizures. We don't talk about those issues when they happen with the general population of families, because that then would break confidentiality of individual medical privacy. But I can just tell you that, you know, students that have illnesses that can manifest themselves in seizures, yes, we do see that, and those are the types of things that we've seen. And they're not unusual, and they're not different than what we saw prior to the pandemic even. So I just wanted to speak to that issue. We, we are looking at ways in which we can provide more opportunities for our community to come together, to engage in dialogue. We've done a lot of that, and we'll hope to continue to do that more as we go forward. There was a specific question about immigrant status of students. We do not ask any of our students their immigrant status, so if you enrolled your child as a kindergartner, that's not documentation that we've ever sought. And that's not something that we're required to seek, but there's also a statute at the federal level that requires that we educate all students that come to us who are K-12 education age, service. In terms of vaccines, as I've said before, we do not have any information in order to have any plans as a district to do any sort of vaccine mandate for our students. As you know, vaccination requirements have been placed for school-aged children for many, many decades, but there are opt-out provisions for those vaccine requirements and have been on the books for quite some time. I've not gotten any new information about any of the COVID vaccines, and I think it's important to point out that the COVID vaccine for children at this point in time is still under an emergency use authorization, so I wouldn't see any development happening while it's under such authorization at this point in time. For employees, we are aware of the requirement that has come through the federal government on the emergency rule from OSHA that has come out to the 50 states. We have informed our staff members that we do see that rule coming forth, but it has been put but it has been put on hold at this point in time because of the court system and the resolution for that. So we will certainly respect that process as it moves along. We're in the Sixth Circuit. I believe there's a stay right now in the Fifth Circuit. But what we're trying to simply do is to provide information to staff members of what it is that we know at this point in time. We will all learn together what happens as these cases are argued at the court houses as they go through this process regarding the current federal mandate for vaccination or testing for employees who work in organizations of 100. Let me just move to a couple of the great ones that I get on my list here. Thank you to Central Williams, Principal Major. Thank you for hosting us so much tonight. Really appreciate it. Thank you to the rest of us and the team here and all they're doing and the incredible work with writing here, as well as the composition book and the quote as well. Writing is thinking and great thinking going on as our students continue to lead the way in so many ways going forward. Again, as I spend time in school, I see happy kids who are happy to be here, grateful to be in school, and great things happening from our teachers as well. Speaking of our teachers, our foundation helped us celebrate as a district our Collaborative Teacher Team of the Year. One of the things that we know at this point in time, when times are difficult, it's great to be able to lean on one another, right? And we lean on one another as a community. And I know teachers lean on one another in so many ways. And we have a great collaborative team. Lynn Spenderos, Melissa Morgley, and Dan McMonney were acknowledged. But we have great collaborative teams all throughout our district. And these three teachers are just ambassadors for hundreds of teams of teachers that are working together all throughout the district. So congratulations to them. As I said, we're all tired. Part of it's November, part of it's the time change, part of it's opening day deer season. But all this that we're going through together, I'd just like to, once again, thank people for giving grace. I heard someone speak about, you know, throughout our history as a nation, we've had conflicts over politics. But what's new, what we used to do is we have conflicts over politics and try to find the respect and common humanity for one another and not have those disagreements land us in a spot where we disagree with the common humanity. And I do worry, as a former civics teacher, that we colet the fabric of society too much. And we do need to find that common humanity that we all share with one another. And I think that's part of our exhaustion as well. We're all feeling that in so many ways. But I want to say thank you. It's all the little things that matter that do this, that pull us together. And I see it all the time and maybe we don't see it. But just thanks to, again, members of our board, our bus drivers, several here tonight, our teachers. I see our school liaison officer. I see our foundation representative. I see our head custodian at two schools, Tim Personair at Orchard View. He knows all about the phases there in that forest. People that, you know, keep, keep things humming in so many ways. And I'm leaving out all sorts of folks. We're in the cafeteria. If you didn't know, the stage is behind us and food service is over here. But our food service folks. I see incredible social workers that help families when they don't think they've got a thread left to support them that stepped in and helped so many ways. So it's all of those little day-to-day efforts on doing the fundamentals, if you will. Someone talked about tucking their kids. And, you know, maybe we'll go home and check on our kids if they're already in bed and re-tuck them. Or maybe we won't. Everybody done asleep. Sleep happens. But it's all those little things that we do as individuals and we do collectively as a community. As it began, there's so much more that unites us and divides us. I would just say this. If, one of the things we try to work with as we work with our staff members in our schools is to always come with a positive presupposition. If we come with a presupposition that that person's out to get me or a negative one, or I can't trust that person at all, we're not going to get very far. Whatever we can do, believe me, I whatever we can do to lift one another up, whether we agree with positions or don't agree with positions, I believe we are all on this little tiny rock for a nanosecond in the time of the cosmos. And I'm also a person of faith. And we're, we're here to be one another's keeper. And we're all divinely connected, I believe. So anything we can do to lower the temperature on the attacks and vitriol of, in our, in our day-to-day work, our kids are watching. And it makes a difference. And the things we do in, in times of challenge and strain make a difference as, as we go forward in the, in the world that our kids will hear. Last thing is I hope everyone has a great, happy Thanksgiving. Thanksgiving is a great holiday where we don't have lots of expectations, even for our professional football team favorites and eat some turkey and enjoy time. That's my reason.
Thank you. Any questions for this evening? New board communications this evening. Well, thanks, Leanne, for the couple of things I wanted to say. But I did want to say quick, thank you. I am reporting on the foundation, the Forest Hill Foundation, which picks up the gaps where the school system kind of stops. The foundation picks up. And I wanted to say congratulations to the foundation. They had their gala a couple of weeks ago. And tonight we did talk about getting involved. And we saw a lot of people, obviously, the board is there. A lot of people from the community were there. It's lovely to see people there supporting the foundation. And they had a banner night, a raise of $170,000. So it was wonderful. And it was a great night. A lot of schools were involved. And then the focus this year was the alumni. And Elizabeth Briggs, as she's her back there. Get away. She did such a great job this year pulling together not only the content, which is the alumni, but also just the production of the video. I mean, I think everyone had little tears in their eyes. She did a wonderful job. So congratulations. As we mentioned, Dan, it was absolutely wonderful to see that. So on top of that, we have the end of the year annual appeal for the foundation. So if you could not make it to the event and still would like to give, there's always room to give, right? So it's the Forest Hills F H P S F, foundation.org. And as well, happy Thanksgiving from the foundation. We appreciate everyone who has done everything for the foundation and helped our kids and our schools with those projects and the extra things. It really does, to everything we were talking about tonight, 24th century learning, it makes a difference. So thank you.
So Dave, we're talking about Mary going above and beyond. So Mary and I went to school.
Yeah.
So we, on Thursday, Friday, I went, ran into the weekend. We just kept going to school. In the spirit of professional learning, which we always encourage for our staff, teachers, and our kids, we went to school board school. There was a conference here in town. And so we attended that to learn and grow in our roles and also to check out some of the, the learning that was there to say, does this make sense? For other board members to attend. It was a great networking event for us to interact with our peers and other school districts across the state, learn a lot of skills. And we learned a lot, we're not going to overwhelm you, Dan, but we learned a lot from our peers and from the experts that are out there. So it was great. And it was, we actually, our first class, we picked our classes separately. So, well, we shouldn't go to everything together. But we said, well, let's go to, what was it? Board service, we did one-on-one. So we walked in and there were literally people that had been in their board position for three or four days. And then they'd go around a little bit. Mary was one of the senior members of the class. And I say that's a testament because as long as I've known Mary as a friend and as board member, we've always been around together.
That's true. Could you ask if we run the class?
Yes.
But more of us should have seen if it was a good culture and something we should probably, right? In our own ranks as time goes on. So you all heard a little bit about this. I'm hoping that becomes part of the mission going forward.
I just had two quick little shout-outs. First, I wanted to echo what Dan was saying at the very beginning. Veterans Day celebrations around the district were way wonderful. I was privileged to attend the one at Forest Hills Central High School. It was attended, well-attended by local veterans. All the Central High School students were there, half in personally in the gym and the rest, for social distancing reasons, in the classrooms. But it really was a wonderful, wonderful presentation. And there was a lovely piece done by Wood TV on the event. So if you haven't seen it, just go to Wood TV. The title of it is Students Honor, Veterans Educate at Forest Hills Central Salute. And it was really nice to see an uncle nephew interview. And, and he learned a lot about his uncle. But we all learned a lot about veterans. It was a very nice course. And I just wanted to say that I loved hearing Trish. I should have said this while she was still here. Her excitement was evident. Doubtly, she infuses that in her students with all of her enthusiasm and drive and, yes, play. So I love hearing that kind of stuff.
Let's stop. Anybody else? Anybody who can watch into a turn, please? I can't yet. You can go first.
You are, yeah. Okay. Madam President, I move, we adjourn this regular meeting of the Board of Education this evening.
I can. Your turn.